Welcome to the special meeting of the South Burlington School Board. We're starting a little bit earlier and we did, our colleague Martin is en route, so he'll be about 10 minutes late coming from Montpelier. So we'll start with any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Yes, sir?
I was going to make a brief statement around the, I know I may be a week late on this, and folks have worked hard to consider the whole high school, middle school redevelopment project, is it appropriate to make a statement regarding that project?
Well, we're going to be talking quite a bit about it later on in the agenda, so we can open up, I guess I'll just ask you, in the interest of time, we will be covering it, will your comment hold for a little while, or do you have other commitments?
No, I think it'll hold.
Okay, I'll make sure we don't go too long on that then, thank you. Any other comments on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, amendments to the agenda, it looks like, David, you want to propose brief, we didn't specifically call this out, but brief presentations on both the budget and the MPV?
Yes, I think that would be good, and that was the intent, but so if we could amend the agenda to include that, we would do budget first, and then we would do a brief presentation again on the master planning, envisioning, and bonding, and then continue with the rest of our agenda as printed.
Okay, do we want, just for clarification, do we want to separate the presentations to precede the activity, or do those?
I think it's best to do them all together, we'll do the bonding, the budget and answer what people ask questions, and then move into the bond, and then we're going to go into, you know, these are mostly school board conversations that are going to need to result in action.
All right, any objections to that from the board?
No.
All right, we will make those amendments as appropriate, and our next topic is, I'm sorry, oh, sorry, I thought there was a question, is to move into those presentations, correct?
Yep, you got it.
Is the comment time?
For items not on the agenda, we pass that.
Comments in the public regarding items not on the agenda?
Correct, yeah.
That's over?
It is, yes.
May I speak?
Do you have a comment on items not on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So, I've been trying to get a syllabus and a bibliography of, of a class that my daughter's in, and I haven't been able to get that, that would seem like it would be something that would be, that every, not only every parent, but every taxpayer should get, because we're, I mean, for one thing, my daughter is, you know, these are things that my daughter is being exposed to, and, you know, things that we're paying for as taxpayers, so I'm just wondering if you could just give me some help, because I don't have, you know, I have no, that would seem like a no-brainer, that that should be provided to a parent, or to a taxpayer upon request.
Can you let us know what the class is?
Yeah, it's called Race in American Society, I think is the name of the class, and I'm just asking to get the syllabus and bibliography of all the, you know, whether it's books, articles, essays, video, I know that they had some human sources come in, and that would seem like it would be, you know, so I'm just wondering if the board can intervene here and get this done, it should not be a problem, either for a parent or for a taxpayer.
Yeah, that seems like a reasonable request, we don't have a representative in high school here, do we?
We do not, but I can-
So I will turn to the superintendent and make that request on your behalf.
Can we get your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sheldon Katz.
Okay, thank you.
So absolutely, fine to do that, students, you know, students and program of studies, the syllabus to the students most important, but also to parents and guardians and the community, we want to have it available, so.
Sure, sure, because these are our schools, right, and we should be able to-
You got it.
We should be able to know what's going on in them every day, every week, every minute, right?
Had you approached the instructor and did-
I did, no, I did, I did, and haven't been able to-
And got nothing back, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Seems reasonable, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the presentations. Are you guys going first?
Yeah, go ahead, budget first. Amity, we're a little bit like, trying to get moving here, you know, 6:00. So we're going to, I'm going to walk you through by your place, and I think there's copies for folks on the table, for those who want to follow along, we have page numbers, again, this is going to be an overview of the budget presentation, I'll walk you through it, answer questions as we go through, and denote where there's differences or changes from the January 8th board meeting that we, where we last discussed this. Maybe a little bit hard to read, so you can follow along if you so desire. So this budget recap reflects a slight reduction from the last one, we were up at 8.81 on the total expenditure, so it's a slight reduction, it represents 4.19 million dollar increase in the total expenditure, listed below are the components of that increase, 2.712 is in benefit increases in salary, contingency for all three collective bargaining groups, including recommended additions, and so what we've done here is, of the increase, 65% is related to that particular area, so 65% of the 4.1 million dollar increase, again, trying to provide some additional clarity to this. 1.42598 in continuing service expenses, that represents 35% of that, and these include expenses in areas of tuition agreements, stewardship projects, contracts with vendors, service providers, vocational tuition, lease payments, reduction of the 36,000, again, in debt service, and we're going to go over this a little bit more in the next, a reduction in revenue, or 0.11%, overall local state revenue is increasing slightly by 11, but note that the federal is decreasing by 23, resulting in the 12,000 difference. We'll be able to come back to these two if you want to mark, or however you want to do that, Elizabeth, some important facts here, the current 19-20 student population has increased, was increased 35 more students from what we projected last time at this year. The projected 2021 year-
Coffee. Just bring it over here.
Yes, no, no, no. The projected 2021 school year is forecasted to have an additional 68, resulting in a total of 103 additional students, respective of those two years. Equalized count has not yet been finalized, we've been pretty clear about that, that has been one that has changed throughout, certainly March, April, May. Healthcare premiums, we're, you're all aware that the increase is 12.9, but due to the adjustments in the Act 11 and the healthcare particulars to our staff needs, that represents All three collective bargaining groups are currently in negotiations for 21 and beyond. Class sizes, as I've said earlier, on the 8th, require some additional teachers to support those areas, also specific student needs, increased workload, and some added state and local requirements have contributed to the additional staffing. This budget includes facility stewardship needs with minimal investment in the high school and the middle school, we've talked about that, it's a result of the master planning and visioning and bond that's being proposed, and will go before the voters. The increase is significant as a result of the use of the bond funds in previous years, and we've got a slide on this for you in a second, which was a request that you had at the last board meeting. The increase is related to the previous years where we had bonding in 15, 16, 17, 19, and 20, again, assets from those bonds were able to help us with pretty significant things on the stewardship side. Here's again, credit to Amity, Gary for pulling this together, just looking at kind of what's, what we did with the 15, in 15 and 16, we had the 1.6, this was the repurpose bond from 2005, and these were the things that we were able to do, the elevator replacement at the middle school, the high school elevator upgrade, bathroom remodel, again, you can read through those, and Chamberlain roof repairs. In 16 and 17, we had a 2.5 million dollar bond, we were able to do the high school bathroom remodel, the elevator upgrade, Munson turf and track, windows again at the high school, because remember, we didn't have enough money to do it because of the PCBs the first round, the gym roof and ceiling, middle school cafeteria, orchard road repaving just on the reentry, and transportation office, we had some upgrades, this is the one at 400 Dorset, the little blue house.
Oh, transportation is down there.
Oh, down, okay, yeah, at the Patchen Road, thank you.
Just a quick question, out of curiosity, do we have the comparable investment in upgrade, or in maintenance and projects in those particular years that were in the operating budget? So we have sort of a combination of bond-
Kind of the stewardship things that were not covered in this?
Yes.
We have them, but I don't have them available for you tonight. Continuing on, the 19-20 school year, we had the 950,000 dollar bond, and that was, we were able to do the Munson Field, the training room and bathroom, storage facility, and the high school library reconfiguration, middle school burner replacement, floor and lighting, Chamberlain light fixture, fire alarm, sidewalk, orchard roof, light fixtures, fire alarm flooring, those are very similar, and Rick Marcot roof, again, these are roofing projects, light fixtures, fire alarm, main door replacement, and flooring. Questions, and again, Amity, Gary, feel free to-
I thought you were looking for, over those five years, there's 4.17 million that was not in the general fund, in the operating budget of stewardship work-
Over the same period of time?
Yes, that was funded, that's 4.7 million dollars, or 4.17 million in facilities work that was bond funded, that's really contributing to the, to the 500,000 dollar increase that we have in the operating budget for this year, because we are not bonding for any of our facility stewardship projects.
Well, okay, so that 4.17 is the sum of these bonds?
Yes.
I guess my question is, what was in the operating budgets of these years, so-
I'm looking it up.
If we have-
It averaged about 500, 500 to 600,000 dollars in those years.
So over the same period of time, it might have been-
Per year, same.
While we were, while we were still doing them, that's a number, the 525,000 dollars sticks to me as an average in our stewardship, excluding the work we did on the bond.
Correct.
Yeah.
And these are bonds over, is that, did you say five years, Gary?
Well, there's, there's five years of-
Five periods, but there's three bonds.
-covered stewardship work in that.
So we're talking about ballpark, about two and a half million of operating expenses associated with- So, I mean, just ballpark, the run rate over that five years is about 1.2 million, approximately, I've got 6.7 million.
Right, if you factored that in, yeah.
Right, if you factor that in, yeah, that's accurate.
Thanks.
Dave, do you have any questions? Or do you want to get through it first?
Let's, yeah, let's try to get through it, of course, I violated my own-
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
So here, here again, in similar format, from what you saw on the 8th, this one actually increases, and we have two classroom teachers at Rick Marcot, this moves us from 19 to 21 teachers at Rick Marcot in the corresponding amount, and then also inclusive is a suggestion, I think from you, and also the budget advisory group that has provided insight around how best to share the information, represents 3.98%. One classroom at Chamberlain, a 0.2 guidance, again, based on incoming growth needs for guidance, two FTEs on campus, again, this would bring us to six, we have currently four, this would bring us again to six, currently, we do not have support at the elementary schools, other than times when we can move our people around, which has been difficult at the elementary level. 0.8, this is different than what you saw last time, this was a 1.6 last time at the high school, the high school has a significant increase in enrollment with a large eighth grade class going over to the high school, the request was at 1.6, we've reduced that with the help of the high school administration, we believe that can work, it will be tight, but it's a 0.8 FTE add to appropriate, to support that need. A 0.1 nurse, we already have a 0.1 district nurse liaison, but as you know, with a lot of the things that are going on, whether it's health-related issue and getting advisement, supporting classroom nurses, each of the schools, screenings that we've seen with hearing and sight, has definitely supported the 0.1 nurse liaison. Some added support here at the middle school, to continue with our work on proficiency-based learning, some supervision needed at the high school, middle school, just to support events in which our current activities director just can't get to those, we think it's important that we do have some additional supervision at these pieces, soft, the human resource software, we talked about before, again, this is a least amount, really critical that we continue to work on making sure that we have the necessary software and information available. The Rave mobile safety software is again, immediate notification to allow for students, parents, guardians, and community to know what's going on in the event of a, of an emergency. The maintenance and facility projects, again, are provided, they've seen that list before, presented by Gary, but this represents the work, although we're trying to minimize the amount at the high school and the middle school. The repayment of the bond line of credit, remember, we're doing work currently, architect firm engineers, and so we took out a line of credit, this pays that back, but this is really an interest-only amount, so it's delaying a year essentially, and you'll see on the next page where it shows that, that as well. Anything to add, Gary, Amity, that I'm missing?
No.
Can I just ask, there was a contingency teacher for Orchard, I thought, will we talk last week?
We still have that in.
Still there.
I missed that somehow as we were going.
It was never added as an addition, we just had put two contingencies in as, for elementary, one was going to be Central, and one was going to be Orchard, David asked to move that one contingency out, and I'll get to it on the FTE sheet, you'll see it noted there as well, but it was, yeah.
Thanks, Bridget, for, yeah, it's still, it's still there.
One contingency is still in.
Okay.
Okay, so page eight, the reductions, just recaptured from the January 8th, the repayment of that line of credit, interest only, so there's, that's the savings or the reduction, the reduction of the 0.8 contingency at the high school, remember, that was 1.6. Security, we have some software stuff that we've had, and we can make some adjustments in some of those software pieces around safety and security, I'd rather not go too specific on that, but we feel like that's an appropriate way to go, and then contingency reduction, specific to salary, we have some areas that we're definitely behind on in some of our areas, and so we had some contingency money, we've made some reductions, here, $25,000. So the total reduction from the January 8th budget is $441,000. Now, pause if there's any questions.
Does the line share the reduction, though, is just putting off the payment, is the line?
That's right, that big part is the 340, we borrowed money, the 350, and this is, it does, it pays the interest only, if there's a successful bond vote, then the bond would repay that, if not, then obviously, we would have to pick up that principal payment the following year, and interest.
And can I clarify on the statewide healthcare, that is, six months of that will be in this operating year?
That's correct.
So that would include not only new folks who might be eligible, it would include also that the district current contract has employees paying first dollar, and the statewide has employee first dollar.
Yeah, so what I, yeah, so I upped the HRA utilization in the second six months, I have one percentage of utilization for the first six months, based on our history now, and then in January, for the second six months of the fiscal year, I upped that utilization, knowing that we would go to the first dollar as a, as a district, rather than employee first dollar. And then we, you know, definitely had to add numbers for staffing that will become eligible, that are not currently eligible due to the 17 and a half hours, and new staff is in that number as well, benefits for new staff. So that's the 17.77 increase.
That's all where that is?
That's where-
So the premium increase at 12.9?
Premium of 12.9.
Plus, and there will be another, we will get another six months of unknown premium increase, correct?
Yes.
So is that in that 17?
No, because our premiums are July to June, so 12.9 is our July to June premium, so we'll know that piece, and there's no difference in employee, employer share during this contract, during this budget season, that will not come into play until 21, 21, where the, the change, the 2% of support staff, it doesn't happen in this budget season.
Okay, I guess point being, you feel you've captured the full amount.
I do think I have captured all that we can gauge by what our utilization and such is, yes.
Yeah, and, you know, just as a sidebar, the superintendents in Champlain Valley, we met, and so we're just talking about where things are at, and specific to healthcare, and I was saying to Amity and Gary that, you know, I was asking some additional questions, many are, many are below where we are, again, it's not apples to apples, because people have had different support staff arrangements, but I just was feeling like they were, they were a little, maybe missing some things, so we, they asked to see if we could collaborate a little bit more to make sure that they have captured things appropriately as well. So, again, just some collaborative work, but kind of doing some-
And to clarify, though, it's, we've got, that's almost 31% in the healthcare benefit, inclusive of some new headcount that would be participating.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I have a question about the security FTEs, too.
Yes.
If we're adding two to the four for six, why do we have more than we have schools?
Well, part of that is we have, we have a lead security person, and you can't just have one person stand there for the, for the whole time.
Especially at the high school.
Yeah, and so we do have that person be able to move around, give a break, or respond to, and support if needed. We again have had them doing what we would say triage right now, where there's big events going on, we've tried to, you know, get people there, but it's a heavy load right now, we got a lot of parents and guardians that are asking a lot of questions around, you know, who's coming and going, how are you safeguarding my children, et cetera, and right now, you know, our administrative assistants in the front offices do a great job, but they're not, they're not able to be, put 100% focus on that, on that, on that lens, and so this is a pretty important piece. We obviously made some decisions around the software adjustments, but felt like, based on what we're hearing from folks, that that's a pretty important part for them to have the security people there, yeah.
And so the sixth person is almost like a float or something?
Right, it's, it's a lead, and now like, Gary can-
Yeah, there's a lead school security officer who takes care of scheduling, he rotates in to fill, so people can get breaks, there are almost always two people required at the, at the high school, because of the volume of people coming and going throughout the whole day, and then, that, right now, that person and the whole team rotates and covers a small portion of the elementary school day, school weeks.
Okay.
So we're going to, we're going to start moving into a summary and an impact on tax rates, correct?
Correct.
So, sir, now's the time to ask a question, or ask for clarification?
Yeah, my name's Mark Bradley. Dave, about the students, there's an increase of students coming into the schools for this coming year?
Yes.
And then do you have the breakdown, do we have transfer students, how many transfer students, and with transfer students, do we make money or lose money with transfer students?
So you'd have to define transfer, we have tuition students that are coming to us from the islands, they-
That's what I mean by transfer.
Yeah, so, though, we call those our tuition students, they're our students, and they come to us from the islands and from Georgia primarily, and that population, we forecast, and we forecast fairly conservatively, based on what we hear from students that are interested to come here, but that's, that, that would be our tuition students. In addition, we have forecasted enrollment trends based on population of South Burlington, and also current activity that's happened between the time we opened the school this year to where we are today, and a good example is we've had, I don't know, I'm going to get this number wrong, but I know we've had at least about 12 to 15 additional students already at Rick Marcot coming as a result of housing, new housing opportunities on Market Street, so we're definitely seeing that. In addition, and you've heard other folks talk about the demographic study, so we have a demographer that looks at kind of our makeup of our city, potential for new, for children coming into our system, and that also has helped advise us on what that looks like. But right now, just out of the gates, as I said earlier, all of our schools are seeing increased enrollment. Now, with the exception that middle school, they're going to push a big eighth grade, the biggest eighth grade class ever, over to the high school, their incoming number is slightly down, so their enrollment will be a little bit less than current, because of the big eighth grade year, but all the other schools, we're seeing increased enrollment next year.
So on average, ninth grade next year will class sizes be, I'm assuming they're going to be?
Right, and that's part of, Mark, the addition of that 0.6, or 0.8 that I just mentioned earlier at the high school, for sections to support the student requests, based on the program of studies. So when students make those selections, Patrick initially asked for 1.6, and we've cut that down to 0.8, and again, we want to be able to cover those courses based on that increased enrollment.
And then again, the one point, the tuition students from the islands in Georgia, do we lose or gain?
Well-
Or is it a break even?
Well, they, they bring with them tuition, right?
Yes.
First, they bring, they bring, you know, enhancements to our student body, right, they're part of our school. In addition, they bring revenue, and that revenue, obviously, is important for us to be able to, you know, to offer the program of studies that we do. Obviously, if there was significant reduction there, then we would have to have a correlating reduction in programming, staffing, et cetera, so, and that's been pretty stable, we picked up, we, we actually, I'm going to get the year wrong, but we brought in Georgia students, Georgia is a pre-K to eight, and we brought students in, I want to say 10 years ago, maybe, approximately, and so those students have come to us as well, and that has been an important part of our, kind of our consistency around the staffing.
Thanks, Dave.
No other questions, we'll move on, I know I'm probably rushing a little bit for boards, slow me down if you need to, this is just a summary of both the revenue and expenses, and on the top, you see what it, what we, where we were at before, the reductions now represent, or the expenditures represent the 7.96, we've put some footnotes down at the bottom, obviously, contracts with special education service providers, stewardship projects, et cetera, and the Vermont State Teachers Retirement Unfunded Healthcare and Liability, which is our kind of full exposure for the South Burlington School District, all, all schools, all districts have that.
That's reported at the state level, correct?
Yes.
And do you know how it captures the liability?
I do not.
Dave, if I may, any quick question?
Go ahead.
The 17% increase in health insurance?
Yes.
Is that typical, like, I'm buying my insurance in state, it typically goes up like 8, 10%, 12% for the last 10 years, okay, as a citizen in Vermont, Blue Cross, is it, 17% seems high, but is that typical of what we see in the budget year to year, like that high number?
Well, what I can reflect on over the past years, I'll go 10 years, we've had, you know, small, I would say incremental increases in healthcare, there are some years where we've had some spikes, but generally, through VHI, which is the insurance group that we schools have been part of, has been pretty reliable on kind of a consistent, predictable increase, more recently, and I'll let others respond to, more specifically, the 12% increase.
Yeah, I can respond, actually, the premium increase for this year is 12.9%, that's pretty much in line with what was accepted by the state for Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and MVP, they were both double-digit increases, what's happened historically is that reserves has been used to buy down the premium sometimes, and those reserves were being bled off when it looked like, years ago, we might have been going to a single payer system, and so they're also being built up now, and that's part of the premium increase as well.
Okay.
But it, it's an increase that's in line, but it's obviously something that we're looking at. And the seventeen seven is in addition to the twelve point nine because that includes new employees, but it also includes the impacts of, um, the statewide, uh, award that was, um, that resulted from arbitration in December. Yes?
So in the private sector, many employers are having income sensitivity. It gives a broad range in some of salaries in the, in the district. And I know you're, tell, you're, you're, the, the cost to the employees almost zero, or zero or almost zero now. But if you introduce, you know, uh, an income sensitivity so that, you know, somebody who's making, say, eighty thousand dollars would have to pay, say, you know, for example, forty percent of the premium. Uh, that would probably be an incentive to, to have, you know, maybe, you know, plans that are not quite as extravagant as the current plans. And have, have you thought of that? Is there, I don't see any obstacle to it.
First off, it's not, it's not zero now.
No, I know, but it's so typical in the, in the private sector. I know, I think we pay forty percent of our premium.
Yeah, right now in our current contract, our educators pay twenty percent of the premium.
Twenty percent.
And then they pay first dollar toward out-of-pocket expenses. That, by state statute in Act eleven, the state required that that benefit now be negotiated at the state level for all folks within the educational system. So that is the award that was just, has just been made, that will start impacting benefits across the state in, um, it's effective July one, but it's status quo until January first of twenty twenty one. So six months of this coming operating year.
Okay, but that would not prevent you from having, from doing.
Yes.
Some sort of income.
It will prevent us.
Sensitivity because.
Yeah, no, it will prevent us by law from doing that locally.
You, because you can't charge any more than twenty percent.
No, because we can't negotiate healthcare benefits locally anymore as a result of statute.
Well, it would be the same benefit, but it would just be a question of if the employee.
The cost sharing. The cost sharing's negotiated at the state level.
Would have to share some of that.
Yeah, list, it, it, that cost sharing for both premium and out-of-pocket is now negotiated at a state level for, and will be uniform for the entire state, for all districts and supervisory unions. So we no longer negotiate locally for that.
So you have no control over it?
Not anymore, no.
So moving on, uh, this again, um, moving on from the budget summary, this is again, kind of the revenue anticipated. This is a, we have a slight decrease in revenue projections, again, we're trying to be really conservative. And again, we've, we've looked at kind of special education, we've looked at the revenue, as I said earlier, on tuition, and so we're, we're down slightly on our projected revenue for next year. Hard to read on the screen, I, I, I recognize that, I apologize, both of these. This is what we call our budget workshop sheet. Up top, you see it reflected the eight point eight one, which is what we had back in, um, January eight. And then we made those reductions, that four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That represents, um, a reduction in the adjusted expenditure of the fifty-five million eight six five six eight six, or seven point nine six percent. You subtract that revenue out, um, you see it reported a couple of different times there, but it's the same amount. We have to add in our prior year deficit of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and two hundred and sixty-seven. We have then the net edu- education fund, which represents eleven point three zero. We divide that by the number of equalized, or twenty-five seventy-nine. As I said before, that has not yet been finalized, but this is what we have to date. That does represent thirty-nine point six two additional equalized, remember, equalized are not physical students, and that represents a one point five six increase. The, then net spending per equalized pupil is what we again have to report, is the seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-seven and ninety-two. Represents then eleven point two two percent tax rate increase. Items that work into that, obviously, is the property yield, that's been set by the state at ten thousand eight eight three, you see that in the upper right-hand corner of the chart. The CLA, which is now at eighty-nine point nine two, it was at ninety-three point two six, eight, sorry, my eyes. And that represents about a four percent, um, uh, reduction, has a direct tie to our tax rate, and that is pretty significant. Again, it's common level appraisal of how homes are selling in your community, and for us in South Burlington, our homes have been selling above appraised value, which drops that common level of appraisal. We are under a reappraisal process at, at the present time, um, but again, that's a result of home sales. This represents on, now I'm on the bottom right portion of the page, the residential property tax impact on a hundred thousand dollars of homestead, uh, value would be estimated at a hundred and eighty dollar increase prior to income sensitivity. The average condo, two hundred and thirty-one, three five six would be four hundred and sixteen, and the average change on the home, or change on a home of three hundred and thirty-six, one-ten, would be six hundred and five dollars. Um, and then the income sensitivity factors are below. Currently, we have just under fifty percent of our community are income sensitized. And that has a sliding scale, starting from a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars down to, you know, down to whatever the, the scale is, all the way down to thirty thousand dollars. Questions specific to the budget development worksheet? Or Gary, Amity, anything to add?
Just that the yield will not finalize until May.
That could change with the legislature's adjournment, and has in past years.
And are the footnotes, um, accurate on here? I'm looking, it, it.
It should be.
Doesn't look like three and four. Align to me.
Oh, no, you're right, three got moved, three should have been moved up to the deficit number, the forty-three, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand two sixty-seven.
Yep.
And so three moves up, and then that, where three is should be four, where four is should be five, and where five is should be six.
Okay.
Dave, one question, clarification. So in an appraised valued home at three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Your taxes are gonna go up six hundred and five dollars, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's for?
That's if these factors all stay, uh, consistent, Mark, yeah, I mean, and again.
That's for next year.
That's for, that's for, that would be for next year, yeah.
Six hundred and five.
Yeah.
David? The, does the board seem like on a three hundred and thirty-six, that seems like a lot, six hundred dollar property tax increase. Any comments?
It is about an eleven point two percent increase, judging from my own tax assessment for the year, that's what an eleven percent increase would be. Spot on.
Yeah.
We don't disagree with that, and we're gonna talk a little bit about what we're in control of and what we're not, I think, on the next slide, correct?
Jerry had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Equalized pupil count has gone up by four, is that just four bodies increase compared to the one eight, twenty twenty handout? There's four, just an increase of four equalized pupils.
From the previous one eight.
From the previous, that's just four more bodies?
No.
No, it's equalized, Jerry, remember, equalized, you know, high school.
I understand that, but I thought you didn't get any update on the equalized pupil count.
Well, we did get another update.
Yes.
And they're gonna continue to come, it's a little frustrating because sometimes they can come and, for some communities, they're, they start up and then they're going down. And so you can imagine for other communities, including ourselves, when those change, it's, you know, at what point do you just, you gotta lock it down here, right?
So you start to get drips and drabs of the number changing?
Yes.
Because.
Okay, that seems pretty strange.
The, the title, Jerry, of this update was final equalized people subject to change.
But it's not the final, right?
Right, it is not, yeah.
So the second point, I think they are just mentioning frequently, there is a cap on income sensitivity. As years go forward, whether the bond passes or not, more and more people are gonna be hitting that cap. I think you all have to be aware of that, it's an important number, and the, and the knee-jerk reaction is, well, the legislature will just raise the cap. That, of course, opens up a whole new can of worms. So I think everybody has to be aware, that's a fifty-six hundred dollar cap, it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, I mean, I think income sensitivity is not a simple and easy thing to explain, right? There's a, there are a multitude of factors in there. What we do know is that anyone who, or household income that's below one hundred and thirty-six will have some income sensitivity. But there are other factors based on the home value that they sit in, I mean, there's all, there's some factors that start to plug into that.
It works well now, I'm trying to project in the future, as the budgets keep going up every year, and certainly if the bond passes, you're gonna have a lot of people hitting that cap. So it's just something you have to be aware of.
Do you have a question?
Yes, uh, in terms of salaries and wages as part of the expenses, does that include, what does that include as far as the recent union negotiation?
The three point three, uh, three point oh three percent is what you're specifically asking about?
Uh, salaries and wages.
Yeah.
Point nine.
Yeah.
Offlining expense.
Yep, gotcha. Amity?
Does that include, what does that include for?
So it includes contingency because we have three bargaining groups that are not settled at this time for next year, they're just beginning the bargaining process now. So it does include, and it also includes, that number does include the salary that, or the, um, the positions that we have proposed as additions to the budget, so they're also captured in that number.
So we can expect this number to be higher because we're still, we're still negotiating?
I would hope not.
I suspect it's not going to be zero if I had to offer a conjecture. You got three that are still ongoing?
Right, that is correct.
Teachers.
Teachers.
Support staff. Administrators.
To be clear, does this not include a zero increase assumption for those negotiations? It includes a contingency for some assumption of what those different increases could look like based on those negotiations.
Pleasant factors in, as Amity said, that, any, anyone that's being added to the, to the group as well. Yeah.
Now, do I get to ask another? There's a huge jump, seventy-two percent increase for purchased property services. What does, what accounts for that? Half million entries.
That is the, um, the facility stewardship monies that are being added to the budget because, again, we don't have bond funding this, this twenty twenty-one budget season like we have had in the past. So it is the, um, it is the cost of those projects that have been added to the budget above what was budgeted in two thousand twenty, our current year.
Not so much in stewardship in this.
Of, of, a project, sure, there's, um, roofs that are going to be done at all three of the elementary schools, parts of roofs, not entire roofs, but we have phases of those. There's some parking lot improvements, um.
The roofs are a great example of something that has been traditionally bonded and, to pay for in the past, so you would only have a debt service payment. But they're in the operating budget for FY twenty-one.
And flooring, replacement of flooring and things are, those are all parts of our stewardship projects.
The stewardship work, Gary presented it a couple, quite a few times, and that is available, actually, if you're interested in seeing it, is available on our, on our web page. Or we can get you a hard copy too of it, but.
It'll be in the.
It does delineate what those, what those items are, and we have a facility stewardship plan, and many people have heard us talk about, we've rescheduled that from the original inception of that program. Because when I, when we first developed it, there were so many things on there, we rescheduled a lot of those things, and we've been able to take, uh, again, appreciative of the community, to do the bonding. But as that bonding stops, we still need to stay on top of some of those facilities, as Gary's talked about, the roofs, um, burner units, et cetera. So we, that's, that's what you see here, yeah.
Yeah, and just a quick comment on that, when we had an initial conversation to a question I had, the run rate over the past five years in terms of a combination of bonded, um, infrastructure project and operating or annual expense is about one point three million. And this is all in operating expense, um, with the addition of the use of the capital reserve fund, correct?
Correct.
Technically, so it's, it's still less, it's about eight hundred thousand versus the one point three million in aggregate. But what's showing up in the operating expense this year is that five twenty number, sorry, I can't quite see.
Five oh two.
Yeah.
Addition of five oh two.
Five oh two, yeah.
Over what we spent last year.
Correct.
Ask a question?
Yes.
The, I think I have an idea, but the other local revenues, can you just give, give us an idea of what that is?
So that's this, the yellow column on the screen, these all represent what's classified as other local revenue. That means revenue that is not received from the state education fund. So it's a combination of tuition income from other districts, we get E-rate money for, um, our phone system and our internet, we have interest income from our bank accounts. Then the special education, um, the state reimburses our special education expenses at a, um, percentage of our expenses, and there's some different categories of those expenses. So that's the second section that you see of five point nine million. And then we receive other state funds for reimbursement of our driver's education program, some reimbursement, they don't reimburse a lot. Uh, transportation expenses are reimbursed from the state, and then we get a, some vocational transportation reimbursement and fuel tax refunds. And, um, the five thousand of other, we sometimes get small little, uh, local grants or state grants, so those are all accounted in there. So that nine point six million is local or state grant funding. And then below is our special revenue funds, which are federal grants, and, um, the best grant is a state pass-through grant, um, so you'll see those listed at the bottom. So that is what it's all together called other local revenue, because it's not coming from the state education fund.
And the big ones are, uh, are, are special ed and tuition.
And tuition, correct, yeah.
Thanks.
We don't always know about like special ed revenue reimbursement, which generally is supposed to be around that fifty-six percent, sometimes it varies. But again, that's part of the work that we have to do to kind of budget conservatively, and, um, that's not always easy, given the, the number of variables that are in play. So moving on, next slide, um, this is again, one that we've done just to try to be more helpful to folks to understand what happened, how the tax rate is made up. And so, um, obviously, the property tax rate is proposed to go up eleven point two two percent, and where does that come from? So there's some things that add to that, and there are items that lower that. And so obviously, starting in that upper left corner, the proposed expenditure, um, as we've just been talking, we have an increase, um, up to the fifty-five million eight six five six eight six. Um, and that has an effect on that tax rate of ten point one eight percent. The revenue which we were just talking about, because it's, it's going down, right? So that does not help us, so that is a, is a, is a component, obviously. The deficit from our previous year increases, the need, we've gotta, we gotta make that up. The yield that is set by the state, that's why it's in red, that actually decreases, right, of two point four one percent. So if you're doing kind of the math along the way, that's a, that's a reduction, and that's a help to the tax rate. And the common level of appraisal, um, remember, has gone down, and we need to make that up. Home sales are selling higher than the appraised, we have to make up that difference, that's four percent of that tax rate. So again, I think this is a request of the board to have a little more additional clarity, and also a request of the budget advisory folks too. So again, those are the components that make up that, um, make up the eleven point two two.
Well, and also the equalized pupil, you just forgot about that last couple.
Oh, I, I tried, yeah. Yeah, and, and most important part are students. And again, as I said earlier, equalized, again, some folks, I'm not, may not be familiar, but we have seated students, the physical population of students that come to our schools, but then we have weighted factors. So a high school student counts a little bit more than an elementary student, special ed a little bit more, um, ELL a little bit more, that, so all of that factored in is what arrives at what we call an equalized pupil, uh, count. And that's why you. arrives at what we call an equalized pupil count. And that's why you get items, numbers like 25, 79.74. Obviously, we would never talk about children in a, in a, in a decimal point like that. But that's why that arrives at that. Hopefully, hopefully that makes some sense. Questions from the board?
So is there a way to, I guess I wasn't anticipating how this would shake out. But if you, I mean, the CLA has had a significant impact.
Yeah, 4%.
Of the, of that increased tax rate on $100,000 worth of property, we've got that indicated at $180. What are the dollars associated with the CLA on that? Is ballpark?
I mean, it would be.
Our, our tax rate would remain $1.60 if we didn't have the CLA factor in there. So CLA adds 17 cents to our tax rate. So 17 cents is, you know.
But it's 4% of the tax rate increase. So what would, 10% would be 18. So maybe $16 times four of that 180 would be directly attributable to the CLA, if my head math is close.
I mean, that's what I was trying to get order of magnitude. So it's about $60 of the.
So about $50 worth of that 180 in CLA.
I rounded up, apparently, of the 180 that we have.
Yeah. So again, this, this slide, you know, we, this is our homegrown slide over the years, and we've made adjustments. I, I think it's helpful just to see what actually makes up the tax rate and some of the metrics that are in play with it. I, I know that sometimes it's still confusing, but those are the factors that affect the tax rate. Moving on, we, again, feedback from board and the budget advisory, again, to continue to show kind of where, where we are with tax rate overall. Again, this is, this is a very different story in many communities, albeit we totally understand that the tax rate change for this year is 11.22%. But the five-year average is 2.05, and our 10-year average is 2.46. Again, pretty significantly different than many other communities. We've had some years where we've had down years, as you can see, and we've had some years, obviously, that are, that are up in 2015. There are stories that go along with every one of those years, of which I can't remember all of those stories. But there are indicators similar to what we just were talking about around CLA, equalized pupil expenditures, obviously, that played into those, as the education fund has had some volatility in it. Again, to reemphasize, as the footnote says, these are not final until the legislature is done. We've had some things right up to the very end where those have changed. And then, again, there's the, the information specific to the bonds, again.
How much is the per pupil cost? Around 20,000?
17.
It's, it is in there, and it's on that calculation, sir.
Yeah.
Nope, that's a good question.
I'll show you. It's a.
On page, page nine.
49.
Right here.
Is that, is that only from the, the property tax, or is that?
It's the 17, 447.
Is that the portion that's paid by the property tax, or is that, is that the total?
That's our per pupil spending, 17,000.
Per pupil spending.
That is ad spending. That is our education fund.
What we draw from taxes.
Right. I, I didn't, sorry.
No, I see that. And then divided by equalized pupils.
What you draw from taxes.
What we draw from property tax.
Okay, not, not the total, not total spending divided by the number of students.
Right, correct.
Can I ask a question about the CLA? You say that that's a contributor to the, to the tax rate or the increase to the tax rate. And by, if I understand that, if that, by that, you mean that if, if our properties were assessed for taxes at their fair market value, then tax rate would be lower, but the amount we pay would be the same?
Yeah, you would be, that's right. You'd be paying a higher on your, based on your reassessed value.
Your reassessed value would be higher.
Your reassessed value would be higher, but the, the school tax.
But the CLA should be closer to 1.
That's right.
And so when we divide the initial residential rate by the CLA, it would be a lower number. The rate would be lower.
And when you said the 4%, you're talking about the CLA going from 93 to 89, almost 10.
93 to 89, that's right. Yep, 4%.
4%.
Four, not quite.
Well, that's how much.
That's how much it dropped, and there's a direct correlation.
Right.
But they're not exact. In fact, on the tax rate, from that drop in CLA is 4%.
4%, you mean, would it be 4% meaning 7 versus 11? Or would it be?
Yes.
It would.
And we're gonna, Sheldon, we're gonna do, we're gonna show you that a little bit more in page 24 and 25.
The 7.22% is the increase in the tax rate without the factor of CLA. So it goes from 7 to 11. That's your 4% due to CLA.
And, and on 23 and 24, those pages, you'll, you'll see how that gets divided, gets divided out. Good question. So that's, that's the five-year and 10-year average. The next is the summary of our FTEs. Again, broken those out a little bit more specifically about core teaching staff related to enrollment. You see, we've added three additional teachers, again, two at Rick Marcock, one at Chamberlain, and we're holding one in contingency at Orchard. Guidance services, as I said earlier, a 0.2, and a 0.1 nurse liaison, special education teacher, again, supporting students of need, campus security at two, special education support staff, again, a licensed practical nurse, and then district support staff, positions of central office, data analyst, and a van driver. So we're at 9.04. The board asked specifically about.
Sorry.
It's all right. We're good. You can go, you can move on. So the board asked specifically kind of enrollment versus FTE trends. And again, it's not always correlative because sometimes there's additional needs that come in for a, either a few students, could be singular students, and we need to add some staff to support their need. But typically, we'd like to see that there's a correlation. And obviously, what this shows you is that we have a, between enrollment and FTE, our enrollment, which is the, the number climbing, and our FTE, again, a slight incline. And you can see the factors on the right bottom corner, enrollment at 25, 56, and our FTEs at 501, 04, which correlate. And then the, the very bottom, again, I want to just say something about this, but in 2020 and 2021, we, we are not including students that are early college. With early college, it's a new option on their flexible pathways where students can go directly to college. And we do still support them in guidance services. They still graduate. We, we support them in that way. But they are really enrolled in the school or the college of their, wherever they are. And there's money that's extracted from us, too. We're a little bit worried about the volatility of that one as well. But we are not including the early college students. And we've had about 20 of those students this past year take advantage of that opportunity. So there's some volatility there.
Can I clarify that? You're not counting the full enrollment of that, or you're?
Of those students. We're not counting those students.
We did not count any enrollment for those 20 students.
And we know there's, we know there's partial enrollment.
That's right.
Or we just don't know how to count for the FTE. So that 25, 56 would be.
Could go up 20.
20 higher if we counted those.
But remember, I mean, it's, it's a little, to provide clarity, in that they're not in our school every day with our FTE every day. But you could make an argument that our guidance people and some of our teachers are still supporting them. So, I mean, I, I could have included them, but we felt like it was probably the most transparent way to show you that, that way. Okay?
Can I go back to the previous slide for a second?
Sure.
So I just want to net this out. The, the adopted FY '20 budget included 492.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the actual FY '20 is up 6 point, or up 4.2.
Mm-hmm.
And the proposed FY '21 is an additional 9.04?
No.
Mm-mm.
It's an additional 9.04 above FY '20's adopted budget.
Yeah, it's.
That's what this total down here says, 9.04 total increase over FY '20 adopted budget.
But, so it includes the 4.2 that were actual in FY '20?
Yes, it does, right. And that's why they're noted here as positions added in FY '20, like the LPN and the teacher of the deaf and the central office, data analyst, van driver. There is a couple of other things that are in currently, but they will be going out. Like, there's a piece of world language here at the middle school that is not going to be funded in '21. That was just for the big bubble of eighth grade that is leaving the high, the middle school. So there's, that FTE is not counted in the FY '21 proposed, but it is in the current 20.
So if we, if we've looked at the net adds, why wouldn't we do any net reductions to identify those?
They are not in that FY '21 number, though. So I didn't write them out. I, I could certainly do that for you.
And what happened is that there's, yeah, what came out to get to the 501, 04?
Right.
So I guess, I guess my question is, are we, are we at, if you add the contingency, is it the 9.04 plus the 1.8?
Right. It would be if you added those as FTE.
So 10.84.
Over.
Over the adopted.
Over the adopted FY '20 budget.
Correct.
And I, I still would ask the question to make sure that we are compliant with policy governance on the 4.2 that are in the actual FY '20.
We have.
Because my recollection is that was half an FTE. And I, and it was intended to acknowledge not being cumulative, or being cumulative, I guess. Okay, so if we don't use the 1.8 contingency, that would roll over into a future budget?
The money would, correct.
Surplus, basically.
And it's not counted as FTEs at this point because we don't really know if those will be the total numbers, if we will hire the full 100 at the elementary, or if we will even hire the full.
So do, do the, does the FTE summary on the next page include 9.04 or the 10.84?
9.04.
Okay.
This next slide is a little confusing, but in, in your packet, it's got kind of the bar graph on this. But this is a, a pupils per FTE. So again, something, when you look at total population divided by our total FTEs, and again, our total FTEs are not just our classroom teachers. It's everyone, you know, in the building, including our nutritional services, et cetera, folks, right, total number. And so this is the 5.10 pupils per FTE in total. And you can see the previous years, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
How does that compare to the state average?
I do not know at the present time where that, where that would be, Martin. And my colleagues, I haven't asked them specifically about, about that in Champlain Valley.
Yeah, I know traditionally, we've had a more pupils per FTE as I recall.
Correct.
But I just want, yeah.
I think that's a general trend where density, you know, or where we are, we definitely have seen maybe some improvements in this state as a result of Act 46 and mergers. But, you know, I, I would be guessing to tell you exactly where that would be. Again, I suspect that information will be coming out in the near future as we move closer towards budget adoption, you know?
And David, the staff FTEs on the previous slide, or, and for this, for this ratio, include what employment groups?
All of them.
All.
Yeah, our entire district.
Nutritional services.
Yeah.
Not nutritional services because they are an enterprise fund.
They're Fund VII.
So it includes transportation. So actually, if you look on this left side down, all the teachers of the course, then the supports in arts and visual arts, et cetera, guidance, health, special education, and ELL, all support staff, special education, as well as our office support, our central office teams, all of that.
Yeah, the only group in here that isn't nutrition service and schools out.
And schools out, okay. So it's as fully loaded as reasonable.
Right. And for those folks that are wondering, nutrition service, it's a self-sustaining, what we call Fund VII.
Enterprise.
Enterprise fund. So it's, you know, the revenue that they make is supposed to, you know, pay for the expenses. That's true. And schools out has been predominantly. That has not been the case traditionally in nutrition services. They've run a deficit. And the general fund has reimbursed or paid some dollars to help keep that neutral. Again, this is part of nutritional services and school lunches, et cetera, that's out there. But just to be clear about that, in case anybody's wondering.
So sort of broadly speaking, efficiencies of scale seem to be in effect, right? Like, our average is about five to one students to staff. But it seems like the additions that have been made over the last four years have been about six to one or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The next few sheets, again.
Own question.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Question?
I guess. I remember one, I want to compliment whoever put this together, very thorough presentation of the numbers. Just to flashback, I'm looking at the total budget, and for the last 10 years, the last two years, the two of the largest increases, 4% and then 7.9. Is there a trend developing here that you see from the numbers? Because for 10 years, there was only three out of 10 years of the number, the increase in the budget was over 4%. Two of those are in the last two years, with the largest being for the most recent year. Is there a trend developing?
I hope not. Yeah, I mean, I think there's some volatility out there, you know, obviously things that we know that are in play, benefits in healthcare, conditions of our schools, you know, trying to do that work is certainly something that can add to that. I think we've been fairly consistent around other factors. Obviously, student enrollment and student needs are a big component of that. When we have an increased enrollment, as we're talking about this and how we do that, we've, we've had increased enrollments before. But depending on how that disperses within a school, we can handle it for a while. But we're currently at Orchard, we're at our upper limit at over 400 students. Rick Marcock, as a result of some new, new developments and on Market Street, we're pushing that upper threshold as well. And we're up to somewhere very close to the highest numbers we've ever had. And Chamberlain's seeing growth, too, although we have some room to grow there a little bit more. But we're definitely seeing increased enrollment. It's hard to look at, you know, in the items in isolation. We've got budget expenditures, but you do need to look at the revenue side of it, too. And for us, when we look at revenue, obviously, as Amity Gary went over, a big portion of that is, is that equalized pupil count and how that gets provided back to us, right? And obviously, with increased enrollment, you'd see equalized pupils go up, which is a, which is a significant help, obviously, in what we get for money. That is a complicated process, too, because equalize isn't instant. It's, it's averaging over periods of time. So you could have a large volume of students, you won't capture that whole equalize in, in, in one year. Different than our CLA, when our CLA drops the way it does, you're going to see that attributed immediately. But to your point, I'm not really sure. I hope it's not a trend. We know that this is, you know, a significant increase. And again, I would say when we were back in, you know, in 2018, you know, similar concerns were coming up, too, around the overall expense side. But again, it's the whole equation. What, what I think everybody knows is, is the end, the end column there, which is the change in the tax rate, which is what affects our community. And we're aware of that.
I mean, if you, if you look at the 8%, isn't about two-thirds of that salary and health increases? And isn't about one-third the stuff that was normally bonded for infrastructure repairs but is now in the general operating budget? And then to get to the 12, you just add another 4% from common level of appraisal, right? So basically, it's infrastructure stuff that's not being bonded, but in the operating budget and a huge healthcare increase, right?
And also, one other contributing factor is that we don't have a fund balance any longer. Where we had been carrying a fund balance, we spent that down with loss of revenue projections in the last couple of budget cycles. That's creating this also for, at least for the '21 budget that we now have, no fund balance, which is absolutely unusual for us. So that, that is a big contributing factor as well.
Yes, sir.
What will that rate be in a couple of years as an increase if we move forward with the construction project that's being considered?
I think we're going to have.
We're, we're going to get to that because we do have the bonding, the bonded debt cycle. I think we'll get into that. And if we don't, you know, make sure to ask again. But we're going to show that again. So some of those pieces, you'll So, some of those pieces you'll see impact in years three, four, you know, and outward. Yeah, obviously, you're going to have an impact.
My home calculation of that is it's about 30 or 40%. So, that's, that's what, based on what I see on your website.
When you looked at that, that amount.
I'm expecting that increase from the construction to be a 30 or 40% increase.
In, in your current school portion of the property tax?
Yes.
Or the total property?
The, the school portion.
Yeah, it's hard for us to say. I mean, that, that, obviously, that has variability based on home value, income sensitivity. There's factors in there. I'm trusting you've, you've done your math, and 30% is what you're estimating would you, you'd see. And we're trying to be able to provide folks with, again, the here and now and the bonded piece, so you'll be able to make that analysis.
Sheldon, you had a question?
I just clarify, the biggest increases you're going to see are in the first five or six years, and then it's going to fall off.
Hold on, Jerry. Sheldon, you had a question?
Yeah. Why don't you go back and see what you did in 2012 and even 2019 and do the same thing?
Be nice. There were some pretty significant things going on there, which.
Yeah, because we don't control all that stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we happen to know the years there were CLA adjustments offhand?
Well, that's, that, I'm just looking at the spending, so CLA has nothing to do with that.
No, I'm, I'm just curious myself. Do we know those years there were CLAs?
Every year since 2012.
Oh, and it hasn't?
Has added to the tax rate. CLA has added to the tax rate. Certainly not as significantly as this current year. Last year, I think the increase was nine cents on the tax rate. This year, it's 17 cents, but. And in prior years, it averaged about, I want to say about four to five cents per year it added to the tax.
Every, every year as we went through.
I don't know why I was thinking CLAs were every two or three or four years on as needed.
No, it's every year.
Yeah, and the other, the other part, again, and we, as in the board, is aware of and trying to advocate. Impact fees used to be in play as well. Again, I'm not wanting to overestimate the revenue that it brought in. But for developments that were coming online, there was an impact that they have to pay. Actually, there's still an impact fee that they do pay for water and sewer and public infrastructure. But there was a, there was an impact fee that developers had to pay for the school side. And when enrollments were flat, again, I don't know, I'm guessing about how many years ago? I think it's probably around 12 or 13 years ago, the CLA, because there was pretty flat growth, that went away. So, there is none. But that was also a component that added similarly to kind of the fund balance. And again, it was to offset increased growth that we would be seeing like this. And again, that's not in play currently, which, there's, there's many of these factors that, that are in play, as I said. Let's keep going on. I'm, I'm sure there's some more questions. The next part really is just on enrollment. And so, similar to what I shared with the board before, but on central school, it has a change from the 19 to 20. You see mid-page, right there, that's a total, 379 students. In total, obviously, the K5 population, I'm only reporting. We do have pre-K students in there, but again, I don't know that number at the moment. And so, we're, we're projecting the 21. That's where you see those two additional teachers. You see the class size averages there, proposed. Again, the administration can move, move those staff around if needed. But again, we, we know that those are some areas that have been, you know, recognized as concerned prior to that. So, we're trying to keep class enrollments reasonable. Next is Chamberlain. Again, we're adding a teacher there. Part of the Chamberlain issues are a number of students by grade, and we do divide the city. And that's worked fairly well for us when we, since we redistrict in 1998. But again, we're adding another teacher to that population as well. Again, the principal may move some around, but typically, our lower grades are a little bit smaller. Again, the volatility of, if you have two teachers, you know, at 51, you have large class size, three makes it pretty small. So, you definitely see that number on the smaller size. Orchard, again, I, as I said before, we were concerned about it hitting 400. The current year, we're at 407 this year, and we're projected to go up some additional students to 428. We're keeping that population teacher at 22. Again, you, in addition, you heard me ask for some other requests for guidance services, et cetera, and the class sizes represented. This is where we also have a contingent teacher proposed in the event that we, we grow some more. Now, this is the, the district elementary roll-up, so it simply shows you that we're, where we're at. So, we're currently at 1,022, proposing to go up to 1,075. Again, I'm a little bit worried, this is with some demographer projections. I'm a little bit worried that maybe we don't have this quite high enough yet. But the bottom line is that's what I'm, I'm going with in the number of teachers that we have. And then you see the 17.4 and the 20.1 district average, 18.2 overall. Next is the middle, the middle school. Again, this is where you, you can see on the left top, where you, you can see that eighth grade, that 214 students. Again, for the current year, that is, and you see that they move on. You'll see that number in the high school plus some tuition. But you see they have a little bit smaller incoming sixth grade anticipated in 2021. And so, we do not have any tuition in, into sixth grade, but we do have tuition students that come to us now from the islands, because they were redistrict. That's not right. They, through Act 46, mergers happened, and they have the opportunity now to go to schools for their seventh and eighth grade experience. And so, you see those reflected there as well. Class averages accordingly, and then students per core teacher. Next is the high school. As I said, that number transfers over to the, to the ninth grade. And you can see the tuition students, and then for the total, at 262, that includes the 51 tuition students. The 949, and then you can see the, the averages are students per core teacher. Again, this is, this is, this is just going across the board, obviously, where we have ups and downs from the previous year. But remember, this is a different cohort cycle, right? I mean, so, kindergarteners, but it does show a little, little bit of the volatility in the district at where we have some disparity in, in the grades that come and go. But again, shows you kind of that, that net total. Again, changing all the time. We were just saying at some point, we got locked down the, the enrollment numbers, because they're changing every day. And they're changing generally increasing, not decreasing. That's where the early college also shows up at the bottom, which is what I reported earlier, which we extracted out of the FTE to, to teacher piece, just to be, you know, 100% transparent about that. Again, this is, this is the, kind of the way in which the property tax formula is. Sorry, this is the one I made reference to earlier. I don't know who actually was asking. Oh, Sheldon, I think, just on kind of how this math happens. It can happen in that worksheet, but this is a helpful sheet that actually Gary came up with. So, our total expenditure, you subtract out your revenue. That leaves you with the ed, ed spending at the $45,000,011,097. You divide it by the equalized pupil. Again, that's estimated, 25, 79.74. And that brings you to the ed spending per equalized pupil at 17, 447,92. Continuing on, the property yield. That amount then is divided, which represents then the equalized tax rate to be prorated at 1.1$60,32. You divide it by the common level of appraisal, and it brings you to the $1.7829, the actual homestead tax rate. The non-residential tax rate is not as easy. We don't, we don't do that one. And so, that, that one doesn't have the same calculations if somebody wanted to get into the, the specifics on that one. Questions related to any of those? Again, I don't know that that helps, but my hope is that that does help with a little bit of clarity. I think taking that particular pages 24 and 25 and looking at the, the overall budget workshop sheet is one that is actually, I find helpful to do that, to do that work. So, that's where we are. School board, back to you on questions that you have for us as we look to do this. We do need to make a decision. We need to have this to the, to the city by the 17th, so we're, we're at time. We thought initially that we might have some time up to like the 20th or 21st. We have a steering committee meeting on the 22nd. Steering committee is a committee by charter made up of the school board and the city council. We'll both be presenting our budgets, and that will be at 6 o'clock, right back in here. It will be an hour before the start of our school board meeting on the 22nd. The city will present their budget. We'll present our budget similar to this. And we'll also provide some, some information specific to the bond and, and other articles that, that are out there.
There's a one question I have, is that in past years, we've heard from the citizens' budget advisory group.
Yes.
Directly, there have been some folks here to tell us what they thought about budget. Do we have anybody?
We, I don't think we have anybody in the audience, but we have had, and they've had a recent meeting. And some of the information that's been shared is directly from them. And Amity and Gary, I know you had a recent meeting with them as well. So, again, any recap from them beyond what I kind of anecdotally mentioned?
We met three times. Our last meeting was Monday evening this week. And presented the same slides with a few changes from them. We incorporated into tonight's presentation, one being that they liked to see of our additions what that percent of the total increase in the budget is as a percent, rather than looking at it from the prior fiscal year's budget. So, we changed those percentages to, from their recommendation. They also expressed some concerns at the incremental cost of the budget over adding the bond to that tax rate. That was definitely heard as a concern. We asked if they had any input on contingency. They did agree as a group that at the minimum, a half a percent should be, you know, counted in contingency, up to a one and a half percent. They felt was reasonable when you're talking about a $56 million budget. We asked about any recommended priorities if they were to see some reductions. And, you know, the feeling was that anything that's not going to affect the students directly certainly should be higher on the priority list for a reduction than the teachers in a classroom where the class sizes are on their bursting side and are up against the policies. Can you think of any other additions?
They supported using the capital reserve.
Oh, yes, right.
They supported using the capital reserve and, and years to help control tax rate change.
Yeah, so for folks, we, we established a capital reserve fund.
2016.
2016. The idea was, is that that fund would build up to a point that it would be about equal to or slightly more than any one year approaching in the, in the stewardship plan. So, you know, you're trying to do some roof work, you're upgrading a burner, you need to do some flooring, windows, those types of things, that the steward, or the capital reserve fund would be able to substantiate those costs, so it won't have a direct correlation. The problem is, we appropriate it with $300,000. That, that was a positive, actually. But we've kept it there. We've never been able to build it up because of some of the kind of just significant needs related to budget. So, we've kept that there. This year being a concerning year on increase and on those needs on the, on the capital side, building side, we made the direction to, to use that $300,000. Now, again, it's a $300,000 that's been in the budget. It has been kind of a, a reserve or an emergency if we needed it. So, there's a concern there, but at the same time, there's a concern for the significant increase as well. So, the recommendation was to use it.
So, you brought up contingency. What, where, where is contingency built in? Because I know in past years, it's been built in in different lines. It's been hard to kind of assess exactly how much contingency is in the budget.
So, we, last fiscal year, or for the current year we're in right now, in FY20, we, we had $100,000 in our program contingency line built into the budget. And we funded that exactly the same for FY21. So, in our budget summary, trying to get to that slide. This miscellaneous contingency and transfer in, in the 737, 535, the $100,000 is still in there. So, it's not an addition to FY21. It's level funded from FY20. But it is in that contingency area. And that's a program contingency, not a salary contingency.
I mean, I think it's important, it's important. I mean, we have, you have collective bargaining going on. We've identified increases in salary and benefit. In addition, that there's, there is some contingency in different places, but not a lot, just to be transparent, obviously. If we put exactly what was in there, then there would be probably no sense of negotiating, you know. But that's, that's essentially where, where we are with that.
Any other board questions? Yes.
Oh, about the negotiations, and what, when is the deadline for that?
It's just, they're just getting started with, I, we don't have an update on this schedule, but just getting started with the teachers and haven't started yet with administrators or support staff. Those will be starting in the next.
Do you have a range of expectations on what the increase might be on wages and salaries and on healthcare?
Not, not at this point, no. Other questions?
So, what I would, yeah, what I'd like to do is move on to the, to the bond presentation. And then, as the board knows, you've got some items before you, items four, five, six, seven, and eight for action, of which one is, is the action related to the budget. So, again, doesn't mean that additional questions can't come our way, but we'll move on to providing an overview of master planning and visioning.
It's just to be clear, it's not an entire overview.
That's correct.
This is, so, the presentation I'm about to make is essentially, with minor changes, the presentation that was made at the last board meeting. The only real reason we're doing it, the board's seen all this information before, is just to make sure that people who are watching for the first time know that the board has seen this information, and we're all clear about what we're discussing before we discuss it. So, it's not going to be the whole reason for doing the project and all of that. It's really about budget.
That's a short cord.
Yes, it is. That's okay. Long, um, second.
Should fit in that one, because I think it was the same laptop as mine.
Um, there we are.
Well, in your packet or actual, uh, somebody's having that set, right? Did we even put the number in for, didn't put the number in, yeah?
So, I, Bridget's bringing that up again, probably consistent with what people know. Our website is fully loaded with a lot of information on master planning and visioning, albeit is a little bit overwhelming, I would say. We also have a separate website in there specifically for master planning. And so, it's another link you can get to that has a little bit more of some graphic information in there and questions specific to that. So, I would encourage anybody who hasn't seen it, obviously, between now and, and March, to take a look at it and funnel questions back to us. Again, either the administration or school board members to make sure your questions are answered regarding the master planning and visioning or budget work, for that matter.
And we'll talk about the end of the presentation, too. There are also two community events at the high school. One on January 30th, which is a Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and one on February 12th, which is a Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00 as well at the high school, to hear a short presentation. And then there will be tables for people to break out and go ask their very specific questions about different areas of the project.
You had a question, sir?
Uh, yeah. On the revenue side, how, what variables do you have to consider from the state education fund? Is it a percentage? Is it a request you make? So, how is that determined for contribution to the, to revenues?
Good question. Amity, want to take a stab at the, all the, the factors?
So, the, the factor that. So the, the factor that comes into play with what we get from the ed fund is our local revenue pieces. That reduces how much we're asking for from the state education fund. That's really the only variable from that draw from the ed fund. So the monies that we ask for shouldn't change once we set our budget. Now, it doesn't mean your tax rate doesn't change because that variable can change due to the legislature adjusting the property yield or the equalized pupil count will change some typically between now and when they freeze that number. But as far as what our draw from the education fund is, that's kind of set once we set our budget. Now, we do budget conservatively in our revenues so that, you know, if we do have less tuition students, for instance, come, or we get a grant that comes in under what we had anticipated, or special education, the percent reimbursement rate drops down below the fifty-six percent. We have some, you know, balance in there to account for those. I don't know if that answers your question, I'm hopeful.
Okay, Bridget.
Okay. So again, this is, this presentation mostly focused on numbers. There are a couple of updated images in the, later in the presentation as well. So tonight we'll talk about cost estimates, the overall cost estimate for the project and how we arrived at those. We will talk about cost containment and value engineering recommendations, the total project budget proposal, the tax impact projections based on the assumptions that we're making, the updated building plans and imagery as I just mentioned, and then conclusion and next steps. And then there'll be time for questions. So cost estimates. As folks may remember, in September of two thousand nine, the board gave direction to the architects to further develop Concept Five. And Concept Five was a new middle school, high school, and physical education and athletic center. A process that ensued over the next couple of months to really work a lot with students, staff, administration, and community members to give input into a deeper level of design than we had at the concept level, to develop schematic drawings that were sent off in November to a third-party cost estimator. At the same time, those same set of drawings and specifications were sent to PC Construction. PC Construction was one of a few bidders who bid for pre-construction services. So they were only hired for that pre-construction part to do an independent cost estimate and an assessment of the proposed phasing of the project. And those two cost estimators worked separately and provided cost estimates in December. Those were then reconciled. So those two teams sat down together with the architects and a couple of members of the working group to understand why and how they were different and where they were different and to kind of come to some agreement on where the project was most likely to fall out. And then in January, the reconciled estimates were issued by both parties. And the working group and working with those cost estimators talked about cost containment and value engineering proposals that could reduce the overall budget number. So the total budget number, to be clear before we get into the construction cost estimates, is made up of construction costs and soft costs. And I'll detail a little bit later what's included in soft costs in terms of the types of things that are included in soft costs. The construction cost estimate, the design team pre-reconciled construction cost estimate was two hundred million and PC Construction's pre-reconciled cost estimate was a hundred and eighty-nine million point five. So that was about a ten point nine million dollar variance. And that's about a five point four percent difference between those two estimates. After reconciliation, that variance got much, much smaller and got down to about point five-three percent, which I'm, I'm told is a very, very small variance between two independent cost estimates on a project of this size and scope. So the biggest variances between the two were the HVAC system, the electrical system, some of the finishes, and some of the special construction. So special construction means sort of the extra buildings, so storage buildings, sort of outbuildings that are on the property. And the two cost estimators maybe took a different approach to those two different things. The cost estimate came in higher than we were expecting, not expecting, but higher than we were hoping. And so in order to keep the total project budget under two hundred and nine point six million, the team, as I said, sat down and thought about where there could potentially be reductions. So there are three big buckets, square footage, site and building improvements, and sustainability measures. And to be clear, all of these are potential recommendations. So there is another eleven months to twelve months of design work that would need to occur after a positive bond vote. So these are all items that would be up for discussion and prioritization. There could be other things that the team has not identified yet that could take lesser priority if we decide that we need to keep some of these things in. So those things aren't completely settled. Basically, this, this value engineering cost containment exercise was all about trying to get the architects to a place where they were very comfortable saying that this project is doable for two hundred and nine point six million. And if we set that budget, we can stay within it. So some of the cost containment items that fall within the square footage bucket would be to reduce the overall size of the project by about fifteen thousand square feet. And some of the things that the team came up with were that corridor widths could be trimmed. And, and they did a little bit of that design work in-house at Dorn Whittier. There was originally an elevated walking track at the middle school. That was a little bit, there was disagreement within the staff about what priority that took. The P E staff said that that would not be a high priority for them, which was kind of surprising to the design team. The special education team said that that would still be a very valuable thing. So that was something that was trimmed from the budget at this stage. Again, if we decide later in the process that that's a higher priority than something else, that could potentially go back in. Reduced the size of the middle school gym. So the middle school gym that was in the initial design that was sent to the cost estimators was bigger than the one we're now proposing. The one we're now proposing would be about the size of the current high school gym in order to allow some seating. There was even more seating and a little bit more space in the previous proposal. The theater, we had originally had a target of about seven hundred and fifty seats in the theater, but based on just the geometry of the building, what had gotten sent off to the cost estimator led to a slightly higher number of possible seats in that theater. By trimming that back to seven fifty, that takes some square footage out of the project. And then a reduction in mechanical space that was housing the geothermal system. So one of the items under sustainability when we get there that was proposed as a possible cost containment issue was to potentially take out the geothermal system that had been sent off for cost estimation. So some site building issues that could reduce the, the overall construction cost. Salvage and reuse of concession and bathroom buildings. That salvage and reuse wasn't included in what we asked the cost estimators to look at because we're trying to be conservative in what we're asking them. But there are definitely pieces of those buildings that can be reused. Same for the poles for the field lighting at the high school. The lights themselves would have to change, but the, the poles could be salvaged and reused. Reused the bleachers from the stadium. Use of pre-engineered structures for maintenance and storage buildings. Reuse of urban soils on sites. So anybody who's followed the Burlington project knows there's sort of an urban soils issue that a lot of us come in contact with as we try to do construction on these buildings that have had a lot of construction or a lot of use in the past. And there are ways of reusing those urban soils on site so they do not have to be remediated, which is quite expensive if you have to truck them offsite. Change ratios of cladding materials, change the roof material, and change finished material quantities. So we can sort of change some of the finishes. Sustainability measures, what was sent off to the cost estimators was us having a geothermal system plus owning full P V coverage for our electricity needs. And sustainability measure that could be implemented instead is to lease a P V system instead of purchasing it, which would reduce cost. The building would still be net zero energy ready, meaning that if we as a community decided to add P V, additional P V later on, we could do that. The challenge is that if we're leasing a system, the incentives only get us to a certain portion of our electricity needs. So it doesn't make sense to lease more than what the incentives allow us to lease. So we would still have a building that would be all electric, so no gas boilers or anything like that in the building. There would just be no geothermal under some of the recommendations that were made. Dehumidification with displacement ventilation would still be, would still be in place. That was something that was estimated by the cost estimators. And a double pane window system in lieu of triple pane windows. And we would still be insulating to meet the stretch energy code. So what we would get is a building that is still much more efficient than the current buildings in terms of its energy use and in terms of how it's generating energy to meet that need. So as I mentioned before, the project budget is comprised of construction costs and soft costs. So we were just talking about construction costs. Soft costs include design and engineering fees, permitting costs, furnishing fixtures and equipment, technology, clerk and project management costs, legal and testing services, printing and moving expenses, and owner's contingencies. So there have been a lot of questions about whether this is a real number and they have really tried to add in those contingencies and things to make sure that this two oh nine point six is a real number. So that gets us to the total proposed project budget. So the reconciled construction cost estimate was one hundred ninety-nine million and change. With all of these measures that we talked about potentially reducing, that would take out about twenty-five point four million from that construction cost estimate to get us to one seventy-three point six. And that addition of soft costs of about thirty-six million would bring us back to two oh nine point six million. Tax impact projections, again, it's impossible to say exactly what tax impact will be. There are so many different moving pieces. So what we had to do was make the very best assumptions that we could make. And no one has an exact crystal ball, but these are educated guesses by, by the architects, by our financial advisor who worked on us, or worked with us on a potential financing plan for the project, and folks in the district office to make assumptions about potential state factors. And I'll just walk through those. So the calculations, as I said, were based on a two hundred and nine point six million total project cost. All the calculations for the tax formula are based on these FY twenty-one numbers that we have in the current budget that we were just discussing. So as we discussed in the budget discussion, those change every year. It's very difficult to know which direction they're going to change. We tried to be as conservative as we could. Obviously, we have a pretty low C L A this year. We would hope that in future years, that would be higher. We would hope that in future years, obviously, we're planning for more equalized pupils because we're estimating based on our demographers report and what we're seeing in terms of enrollment, that enrollment will go up, but that is not included. So enrollment increases are not included in the impact assumption. All amounts displayed are project impacts only. So these amounts in the tables that have been passed around the community now because they were shared with the board last week are just the increases related specifically to the project and the financing of it. They are not related to any other increases in budget for the underlying expense budget for running the schools. Roughly fifty percent of South Burlington taxpayers are income sensitized. That's why we did an income sensitivity table as well. And those numbers basically were calculated by running the expected increase in expenses through the income sensitivity formula. And so obviously, as we've discussed before tonight and previously, there are a combination of factors that affect taxpayers that are income sensitized. And so this is basically just our best estimate. Our borrowing schedule that underlies this in terms of assumptions, the, there were many different scenarios run by the financial advisor. And what actually happens will depend on a lot of things like market conditions, how the phasing of the project and the cash flow needs actually play out. But based on our best assumptions on cash flow needs and timing of those needs, as well as what our financial advisor knows about the market for these types of bonds, we would assume that we would have a ten million dollar bond anticipation note issued in the first year of the project to pay for all of like the pre-construction design, all the pre-construction engineering, all the things that we need to really get to the start of the project. The next year, a sixty-seven million dollar bond, estimated, a thirty-year bond for sixty-seven million dollars would be issued. That bond, ten million of that would go toward paying off the bond anticipation note. So net, that would be fifty-seven million dollars. And then a ninety million dollar bond would be issued in the following year. And then the final bond would be fifty-two point six million. The calculations are not adjusted for things like statewide grand list growth. And as I said, not projected, no projected increase in equalized pupils or projected increase in the C L A. These are impossible to read and we completely understand that. I don't know, David, did we print them for tonight? We had them printed for last week's board meeting. And they are available on the district website and on the project website for downloading. So because they are, we wanted to be very specific about showing a table that shows the year-by-year impact. And as we've said before, the tax rate will increase over the first four years of the project. So about the time the building's open in what we're projecting would be twenty twenty-four. That would sort of be the peak of, of how much debt we would have outstanding. So I can't, I can't remember if it's that year or the year following, that it would be at the absolute peak in terms of tax impact and then it would decrease over time. So the line along the bottom, which is the one that I've been quoting, is the thirty-two-year average for these different income levels and property values. And so for a home of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, an estimate of the average impact of this project over those thirty-two years would be about one thousand five hundred and one dollars. For those who are income, pan-income sensitivity, we're estimating about four hundred and thirty-eight dollars on average over those thirty-two years for someone with a seventy thousand dollar household income. Just because some folks haven't been here for some of our other meetings, we did want to share updated building plans and imagery. So this is our current site plan. This is what went off to the cost estimators. On the left-hand side, these three little pods that you see are the team spaces in the middle school. So each of those would represent a grade level. They're two stories tall, so that would be six teams in total. And then the middle connector is sort of a shared kitchen. Each school would have its own separate dining commons and entrance, but they would share a kitchen and building infrastructure. And then the sort of middle portion is the high school. The, the, with the wings on the sides over here are the classroom wings. The middle section is, we'll get into the floor plan a little bit more, is mostly fabrication labs and, and performing arts spaces. And then the rectangular building off to the right is the physical education and athletic center. And clearly on this site plan, you can see that the proposal is to move all of the buildings to the east side of the property. That would allow us to keep the, the middle school and the high school, the existing ones, operating during construction of those buildings. So the idea would be to put up a construction fence, build those buildings, move the students into them between October and sort of finally be in there by January of twenty twenty-four. And then spend another nine months or so taking down the old buildings and rebuilding the playing fields along Dorset Street. So the floor plan, the Level Zero floor plan, we call it Level Zero because on the property, as most folks know, there's about a twelve-foot drop-off to the south side of the property. And the design of physical education athletic center takes advantage of that. The first floor of the peak where the indoor track and the basketball courts would be and the locker rooms are all in that sort of lower level. You would enter the peak either from an entrance at that level on the south side of it or you would enter on the second level of the peak through a hallway from the high school. So the Level One floor plan, as I started to describe, on the far left side, you can see the middle school with its, its little pods for its teams. The blue, the dark blue represents classrooms. So there would be four core classrooms plus a special classroom. In each of those pods, the specials include things like world language, health, family and consumer sciences. The pink spaces are all either small group meeting rooms or they are special education spaces. So for the most part in these floor plans, the special education focused spaces are called out in pink. But those spaces could also be used for other things when they're not in use by special educators specifically. The gray spaces, the sort of triangles in between those dark blue spaces are extended learning areas. learning areas where students could work on projects together and collaborate with passive supervision from the classrooms, which will have windows that look out onto those extended learning areas. The orange space in the middle is the gymnasium, the middle school gymnasium and the locker rooms. The red spaces around the outside include art spaces, band and chorus spaces, and tech and fabrication spaces for project-based learning at the middle school. The choice was made to sort of wrap those around the outside of the gym to make sure that every classroom in the middle school will have access to natural light. There shouldn't be any interior classrooms. The sort of turquoise blue spaces on the lower right of the middle school are administration spaces. And then the green is the dining commons for the middle school. And that flows over into the green, which is the shared kitchen, and then into the, the longer green space to the right, which is the dining commons for the high school. As I mentioned before, the red spaces here in the, in the, to the north side of the high school represent the theater and performing arts spaces, including spaces for dressing rooms and storage and those kinds of things. On the far east side, those classrooms up at the top are art classrooms and a little bit of extended learning space for the art program. And then the whole strip of red classrooms includes things like the band and chorus rooms. They will be on the same floor as the stage, as opposed to our current setup where they're up a level, necessitating movement of instruments and people and materials down to, down the elevator and, and to the stage when we're working on a, a performance. The chorus room would double potentially as what we call a white box theater. It's not a full black box theater, but it has the flexibility to hold smaller performances that are too small for the big stage. And then that flows over into tech fabrication spaces to work with a variety of different materials, ending in sort of this blue tech space that is located close to the science wing. So that upper wing of classrooms would be science and technology and math. And there was a lot of logic behind putting those classrooms together to facilitate project-based learning and interdisciplinary learning between subjects that really work together. And we're struggling to kind of work together in our current building. Again, all arranged around this extended learning area concept. And then the lower wing is, on this map, is languages and humanities and leadership classrooms. The turquoise blue again is administration in the high school. In the high school, it has an interior stair up to the second level, which will be the guidance offices and all of that. Before I move off this page, the little bit of, of, of space on the first floor of the peak, as opposed to the zero level, includes a movement studio and a weight room, the athletic director's office, concession stand, a couple of those kinds of spaces that would normally be in the high school, but are now in the physical education and athletics center. So Level Two floor plan at the middle school, just the second floor of classrooms. You see in yellow, the media center, which is the new terminology for libraries. So they include more than books now, so we call them media centers. And then the little red space just to the west or to the bottom of this floor plan includes the time lab and TV and production studio space, spaces that are sort of crammed in a corner now and will have their own space in the middle school. And then as you move to the high school, the, the blue cluster of rooms includes Big Picture, includes our career development center, which are co-located with each other. The little bit of red that you see there is the balcony of the theater. So the theater would be designed to have 500 seats on the floor and another 250 in a balcony. So we could close off the balcony if we didn't feel we needed that many seats for particular production, but they would be there in case we needed them. And then the second floor of the classroom wing and the first floor of the high school media center. The high school media center would be a two-story media center, the intention being that the first floor would be for slightly noisier work, more collaboration type work. It would be very, it would locate it very close to the dining commons at the top of the stairs from the dining commons. And then the second floor, which we'll see on the third floor floor plan, would be for quieter study. The, the turquoise blue here on the high school is the guidance suite. So guidance counselors and regular counselors and sort of all the services that students might need. On the middle school, it's really hard to differentiate between the turquoise blue and the dark blue, but there is a little turquoise blue just to the, the, further up on the floor plan from the gym and the media center. And that is where our guidance and our opportunity classroom and our wolves den for the middle schoolers would be located. The third floor, the only thing on the third floor would be the third level of classrooms at the high school and the second level of the media center and some of our special education spaces. So these are just some images, some potential images that the architects have worked to put together so we can visualize a little better what potentially some of the spaces could look like. So this is a potential look for the middle school dining commons. I think this one might actually be new to the board because this has been updated since last week even. This is a potential way the theater could look. And this is a potential look for the inside of the physical education and athletics center. You can see on this bottom-left corner bleachers, those bleachers would be pullout bleachers that could be ready in 15 minutes to house 1,100 people. The, the smaller bleachers along the sides are the ones that would be used during track meets or competitions that needed the whole indoor track. But those 1,100 seat bleachers would be big enough to have an all-school assembly. They would be big enough to have community events. They would be big enough to bring graduation back to campus. It's been typically done at St. Mike's. And this is some of the outside imagery, some of the, the vision from the architects of what the outside of the complex could look like. Again, to the far left is the middle school. The middle is the high school. And to the very far right with the sloped roof is the physical education and athletics center. And obviously, in the foreground are playing fields. Middle school entrance. High school entrance. And physical education and athletics center. I think tonight, this video is available on our, our project website. I think we're going to take a pause on this because I think the board has already seen it. If people want to watch it, it does sort of a flyby of the campus. And so next steps, as I described before, our preliminary schedule would be after a positive bond vote in March, 11 months of additional design work and then bidding. There would be a bidding process for contractors to build the building. I think that's something that's not always been clear to the public, that there's been no award of the full mandate to any construction company. That would be a competitive process that would happen. We would hope to start construction somewhere around February or March of 2021. Construction would be expected to take about 32 months for the, the main buildings. And then students and, and faculty, there would be a moving process, but we would expect that by January of 2024, students would be in the new buildings. And then there would be another nine months to rebuild playing fields and demolish piece by piece the, the existing schools. So bulk demolition is not something that is done anymore. So things are taken apart more carefully so that they can be recycled and moved into the appropriate waste streams. So for more information, the public can, can take advantage of any of these meetings that we have set up. I'll be presenting a very, very shortened version of, of the overall presentation tomorrow at the Rotary. I have about 25 minutes to do the whole thing and ask and answer questions too. So that will be a very fast-talking presentation. There will be a community meeting, as I said at the outset, on January 30th. It will be in cafeteria two. And then there will be some tables that people can circulate amongst. So the architects will be here, school administrators and faculty will be here, and board members will be here to answer questions. We're going to do a repeat of the same meeting. You don't really need to go to both. You're welcome to if you want to. But there'll be a repeat of the same meeting on February 12th for those who can't make January 30th. Pat Burke is also generously doing drop-in tours at the high school. And the middle school can be arranged as well if people are interested. Those tours are on Tuesday and Friday mornings from 7:30 to 8:30. The exception is February 11th where Pat has other commitments and can't do the tour that morning. During February break, Pat is going to provide tours at 1:00 and at 5:00 each day throughout February break leading up to town meeting day. Town meeting information night will be March 2nd from 7:00 to 9:00 PM here in the cafeteria at the middle school. That will include the pre-bond hearing that's required by statute. And there will be obviously voting day on March 3rd. One thing I forgot to put on here, we're not doing a full presentation as far as I know, David, but we will have a steering committee meeting, which is another time we'll be talking about budget and other things with the city council. And steering committee is a week from tonight. It's on the 22nd and it's, it's here this time, right? It's here. Okay. So we'll have it here. Is it in this room or are we having it in the cafeteria?
Are we ca, we're here.
Okay. So it'll be in the library on the 22nd at 7:00? At 6:00?
6:00 is the steering committee start, 7:00 is the school board meeting start.
Okay. There we go. And then I think David mentioned, www.southberlinetvtschools.com has a lot more information. It's being updated each day with additional information and slides from presentations and things that we're making in the community. It's great if people need more information to reach out directly to the board, schoolboard@sbschools.net or to David. And yep, there are brochures that are being printed, I believe by the end of the week that will be available for people who need more information or who are, are just trying to get familiar with the project. And as I said, that website will continue to be updated with additional information. So that is all I have for tonight before we get into the discussion.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Do you want me to stay here or should I, I think, I'm not sure that we're going to necessarily.
Up to you, I think, based on questions that might come from either board members or audience, but I think you can probably come up here. We can.
Okay.
Move, move the slides around if need be.
Okay. Board questions or comments?
I guess just to get to the fellow's question about percentage impact, is there a way, Gary and Amity, of characterizing, you know, the crazy table that we saw with the tiny type? First of all, I guess the question is, in terms of a percentage, not total value, does it hit people on income sensitivity at a similar percentage that it does who are paying, those who are paying on their house value? Or do you know?
Say, there's a correlation based on the, the current factors. As far as percentage, I haven't done the, the comparative calculations between income sensitivity and property.
Yeah, just sort of broadly, big picture though. I mean, is it hitting those on income sensitivity at a rate around the same as those who are paying on their household value, like 25% or something?
I would say yes.
And then over the 32-year bond cycle, the average, not the peak, again, to get to his question, is the percentage around 25%, which is what I had originally thought, or is it higher as he was suggesting?
I think, I, I haven't done that percentage either. I can talk to the financial advisor, but I, I think it's around 25%.
But then the peak is perhaps more like what was suggested?
Possible.
Okay. What's, what do you mean by income sensitivity? Is that where you don't get the homeowner exemption anymore?
Gary can probably explain better, I suppose, yeah.
So, so property taxes are based on one of two ways. One is the assessed value of your property. If your income is over, your household income is over 136 and a half thousand for this year. If your income is less than that and you apply for the, now they've returned it the property tax adjustment. I think it's a H112 and a H114.
Right.
If you fill out those forms, there's a calculation that's based on, on actually a percentage of your income that you pay.
Yeah. I'm retired, but I'm not getting that anymore and I don't make any $136,000.
You're not applying then?
I'm not.
I don't know.
Yes.
Well, you should apply.
I did apply. I do apply. I never get any. I got it a while back, but I don't get it anymore.
But is South Burlington a, for lack of a better term, above-average or big spender so that income sensitive, not everybody is income sensitized as much as they would be in another town? Do you know that? Or is it just everybody, everybody gets the same income sensitivity regardless of the schools?
Well, no. It's, it's actually based on you, the unique characteristics of the South Burlington tax, but it's, the percentages are, are based on South Burlington variables.
I'll double-check it.
But there's a great calculator, there's a great calculator online that you can use.
But the level of income is the same across the state?
Yes.
Where, where income sensitivity. The income threshold.
Yes, the cap, the, yes.
136.5 and below are income sensitized, but the factors that would apply to what that would look like is different from, slightly different.
The effect of being the percentage of income that, yes. So that is based on how much your school spending is? Yes.
Do you have a chart of the debt service schedule for the 32 years? I'm wondering because I, I can't understand how traditional debt service schedule translates into the tax rates that are on that chart. So that would be helpful for?
We don't have it in this presentation. It is available. Again, it's based on a lot of assumptions about bonds and stuff. It's, it's, because we have to pay level principal, that's why there's sort of a peak and then it falls off over time because it's unlike a mortgage where you pay, you know, a level payment every time. You have to pay level principal on each of those bonds. And then, so the interest is obviously calculated differently based on what your principal is. So we could certainly share that. That's something that, again, would be obviously marked draft and assumption and all of that. But the financial advisor did a bunch of different scenarios and we kind of picked one that we thought was most likely to, to support what we're doing here.
We're, we're going to get a copy of that, that, that chart that Bridget showed you earlier, just so you'll have it.
Is somebody printing it now?
Yep.
Okay.
You're talking specifically about debt service though, correct?
Yeah, he, he is.
Not the impact individually.
Right. It was about debt service and, and thank you, Bridgette, for explaining how it isn't a, a.
It's not a level payment, it's a level principal payment.
Exactly.
Yeah. Exactly.
That's, that's Vermont's debt.
Yes.
It doesn't matter which side of the charge you fall on, it's going to be very expensive. It's just like a mort, taking out a mortgage on your property. You're committed to make that payment for 32 years. It's a lot of money and I can't support it.
Could we modify that loan halfway, you know, or like in five years?
Yes.
Like the home affordable modification plan?
Gary?
It is, it is possible if, if market conditions are favorable to refund some of these bonds down, down the road, according to our financial advisor.
Well, what if you just can't afford it? Well, can you apply for hardship?
No.
All right. Jerry, go ahead.
So I didn't hear in the presentation, the, what I call the total project cost. Total project cost for me is principal plus interest. That's what the community is going to have to pay for. Greg, if I'm wrong, I did not hear you say the figure 345.667 million dollars, which to me is the cost of this project. Am I wrong? Did, did you say that and I just missed it?
I did not say that. I did say that principal and interest are included in the impact numbers. So the total debt service numbers were what were used to calculate those taxpayer impact numbers. I have said that number before. Gary has said it. It was not in this particular presentation, but yes, 345 is the estimate.
It was not at the press conference.
It was. I said it. You asked the question and I said this was based on 345 million.
That's what I asked about the tax tables. In your presentation to the press, you quoted the figure of the project as 209.6. Not just me interpreting it. A lot of people said to me, yeah, why did Bridget Burkhardt say it as 209.6 million? The project cost is 345.667 million dollars. It's important that you be honest with the community. If the community votes on this and doesn't have all the relevant information, I would really hold you accountable for that. You've got to say the total cost of this project, Richard. It's 345.667 million dollars. It could be higher. If the, if the, if the bonds are rated lower than the financial advisor hopes, that will drive up the interest rate costs even more. Now, why would the bonds be rated lower? Have you looked at Vermont statewide? Because the bonds are going to be rated not just about South Burlington, but, but by the state of Vermont, because the state of Vermont is the sole source of funding for all education in the state of Vermont. Lowest birth written nation, lowest number of absolute births, second highest elderly population, one of only four states whose population decreased over the last decade. There are a lot of things going against the state of Vermont. And so the bond raider may say, this is a 32-year-old bond, 32-year bond. Can we be confident? Can we be confident that the state is gonna have the financial wherewithal to really make these bond payments? I would say you need to be very careful with this, there are a lot of moving parts here. I'll give you another moving part with that chart, based upon home value. I moved here in eighty-five, bought a house which was appraised at a hundred and ninety million dollars. Today it's appraised, I'm sorry, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Today it's appraised at three hundred and twenty-three thousand. So, in your chart, in thirty-four years, I've moved through three groups of that chart. Each of those groups is fifty thousand, so when you look down one column and you say the average is gonna be this, that's only for a period of ten years, because the appraisals come every ten years. So people are gonna have to look at three columns in that chart, and then try to average them to figure out the real number. There are so many moving parts here. You need to be as honest as possible with the community, so that when they make a decision, they can feel comfortable. I made a decision based upon all the information which was relevant and which I had at the moment I made that decision. Now, one really important point, David, Bridgette, is your school gonna be disconnected from the electrical grid in Vermont? Are you going entirely separate from the electrical grid?
No, we have been very clear about that, no.
Then please, please don't say it's fossil-free, because the people who run the electric grid in this country will tell you, Bridgette, you're wrong. Unless you're disconnected from the grid, you cannot say we're fossil-free. That's not the way electrical grids work. They work as a gigantic balloon full of electrons. You're dumping electrons into that balloon, but they come from multiple sources. So when you turn on the light here, and you think you're getting it all from GMP, that's incorrect. The grid people will tell you that's incorrect. You can say, we're buying all our electricity from companies which say, we buy it from source, which is sourced from carbon-free sources, but you cannot say it's fossil-free. That's not the way the electric grid works. You're not alone in this misunderstanding, most of the legislature at Martin is, has this misunderstanding. They don't understand how electrical grids work. So, it's not fossil-free.
Jerry, 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 can I interrupt, please? I, I understand how the electrical grid works. The architects have been very clear that when we say fossil-free, that we do not have gas boilers anymore. The building is run off of electricity. How we choose and how we manage as a community to get that electricity, we understand that that comes from different sources. We've been clear about this in our presentations, maybe I went too fast tonight, but Doran Woodyer's been very clear about what's been planned for the building.
And the other thing about the overall project cost, I mean, when people ask me about my house, I tell them that I paid three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, and I'm paying sixteen hundred and seventy a month for my mortgage. So I don't buy the charge of dishonesty either. We're showing the impact, and we're showing what the project is worth.
But my tax payments every year with this building are going to be tax payments of principal and interest on the project.
Yep.
So clearly-
Do you buy my analogy or not? When I talk about my house-
I, I think it's apples and oranges.
What did you buy it for? What do you pay for?
I think your analogy is apples and oranges.
It's identical to what you're talking about.
Well, then maybe we're just working on different neural net connections here.
I don't think so.
I think, I think, Jerry, it would cause, it would cause further confusion if you then went out with the total cost of a project, so we're gonna, this is the cost of the project. And then a lot of people in, in the world would say, okay, now you gotta finance the three hundred and forty-five million, so now it's, that's not true either. So, the best way to do that, I think, is to be crystal clear with people, and, and as the board has been, around this is the total cost of the project, but clearly, we don't have that money, therefore, we have to go out and borrow it. And when you borrow money, as Brian says, you have to pay on the principal and the interest. And so when you say you bought your home for whatever, that, that, that is, I think, apples to apples what makes people understand, unless people can absolutely go out and buy, you know, home for, for that amount of money, right? So again, I think people understand that piece, you know?
Federal law require, like, if you go out for a mortgage, you, I think it's truth in lending, you're, you sign something that says, here's how much I'm borrowing, here's how much I'm going to pay.
Right.
So you should be very affronted-
Similarly.
That not only is it the two hundred and nine million, but we're gonna be paying three hundred and-
Well, remember, it's not necessarily all locked down on, on the total. We have phases of bonding that's gonna happen, and interest variables that are gonna happen, so you have some variability there on what that, what that overall net amount will be. Again, there's, the factors in the charts that have been provided are trying to share that as transparently as possible. And again, I think, you know, you can walk people down in a, in a really mixed scenario. I think the, the conversation is helpful for people to understand that, yeah, the total process, total cost of the project, but as we finance it, you gotta borrow money, and you gotta pay interest on it, it's gonna be more. And I think, we're, I don't think anyone's hiding the fact that, that that's to be, and that's in, in part connected to the, to those tax rate calculations that you see on the chart.
Most people don't understand the magnitude of the interest with this bond.
Well, we're trying to help them.
So here's the question, on the bond vote day, have you written the language for the bond vote?
Yes, and that's part of what's happening right here tonight.
If, if I'm listening to you correctly, you're gonna use the two hundred and nine point six million dollar figure.
We're gonna walk the board through that, based on their pleasure. We've got legal language specifically that is required by legal language to do the bonding. It's a, it's a detailed process, if you stay tuned, you'll, you'll get to hear, hear that. And we, we are not, we, we have to comply with the requirements in the, in the law, and we've, we've had, you know, legal review, review it on a-
Legal counsel has, has helped us write the language, yep.
And it's, it's, legal language is not easy either to understand from my perspective. Sometimes it, it breaks down the clarity, but that's what we're required to do specifically for, for these particular articles.
Yeah, I have a series of questions. So, and I've been trying to listen very closely, so the question, one of the questions I had coming in here is whether bond payments were subject to income sensitivity. I guess they are. I mean, it sounds like everybody believes that, so. Now, are, is the board, are the board members aware that the federal law has changed a couple of years ago, so that there's a limit on the deductibility of federal, or for local and state taxes of ten thousand dollars? Are you all aware of that? So none of this, you know, assuming that you're at the ten thousand dollars, which doesn't take, in Vermont, doesn't take much to get to, you're already there, none of these payments that were, were put up there are gonna be deductible. Were you all aware of that? Were you aware of that? So it's all like, it's all out of pocket, none of it is, okay, just wanted to make sure that you understood that. Now, with regard to this, to the sustainability, what is the cost of the sustainability features as opposed to not having a building without the sustainability features? Or did you not calculate that?
We did calculate that, I don't have that page-
What's the exact cost?
I don't have the exact cost of what's in, what's out in front of me tonight. The architects have made other presentations on the cost of those different features.
Okay, could you get back to me on that?
I'm happy to, yes.
Okay, I'll give you my email address.
I have it, thank you.
And maybe you could pu-, maybe you could publish that as well. And then, what is the, what is the projected dollar savings, and what are the assumptions for those projected dollar savings for the sustainability fa-, features?
I don't have that number.
Just the dollar out of pocket, but you, but someone does?
The architects are working on that analysis.
Okay, and when are we gonna find that out?
I don't know.
Before the vote?
Before the vote.
And, let's see, so, based on what I've read and what I heard tonight, there are a few things that, that are, are making a new facility a necessity, or are driving the need for it. I read, I think one of the board members said that the people who are taking band in the middle school here have to walk across the parking lot to get to the high school, is that one of the reasons?
That is not a driver of the-
Because that's why I think you said that.
That is, that is a small anecdote that was in a very long presentation, and it was just a tiny example. There have been multiple, multiple presentations about the need for the facilities. The main reason for the need for the facilities is that there is no option to do nothing. Both buildings are at the end of their usable lives. The infrastructure systems in them, the HVAC, the electrical systems, all of those, there was a detailed analysis done of those systems. Something is going to have to be done with those major systems in the next very few years. If we choose to do nothing now, we risk at some point not being in a situation to be able to address those systems if one of them fails. That means a big disruption to what's happening in the schools.
Okay, because what else I've seen is that there are space considerations, that students don't have the space to meet. Is that one of the considerations?
Yes, collaboration is a big part of today's teaching models, and, and there, there are many challenges with not having enough collaboration space, both between students who are working on projects together, as well as, we've heard from teachers who have come through the process and the design process, that they don't have enough space to meet with students or groups of students when they are working on projects or advising various clubs and those kinds of things. There just aren't enough collaboration spaces in either building.
So is it a question of too many students for the size of the buildings?
That is the case at the high school. At the middle school, there's theoretically more space, but the way the space is organized at the moment, some of the spaces we have are too small, others are potentially slightly too big, they're just not configured in the way that we need them to be configured for how we're teaching kids today.
Okay.
We're gonna, Rob, did you have a comment or question?
I just wanted to get some clarification. When you are asking about, I'm Rob Distrell, the door with your architects.
Yeah.
When you're asking about sustainability features, specifically what feature are you asking about?
Well, you talked about sustainability features. I mean, how much could you save by, by taking out, you know, I'm trying to think, by, you know, putting in a, a gas burner or something like that? And what sorts of assumptions did you make about the future of energy costs and so forth and so on?
Yeah, I mean, the vast majority of the elements that are in the design are integrated to the standards that are out there today for energy efficiency. So, you know, the types of windows, the amount of insulation in the walls, the materials that are used that contain recyclable materials or that are recyclable, you know, the stormwater management systems, the, there's a lot of elements of water conservation and so on that are all integral into the design of one of the school buildings today.
And they all have paybacks that they'll pay back over, say, three, four, five years?
Yeah.
That would be in the private sector, that's usually the payback that you're looking for.
If you compare that, if you compare that to how much you're spending today with, like, let's say, so, like, for example, today, your existing buildings have about R4 value in insulation in the walls, okay? So typically, so the code that's coming out in 2019 says that you should have an R20 wall insulation value. So, and they continue to go up. So, if you compare the rate of return of your investment on your sustainable elements that you're incorporating, there's substantial savings each year versus what you're paying in heating costs, as an example, today through your existing buildings.
Okay, well, I was told that there are, those calculations exist, so I guess that would be good, if they can be.
Kind of circle us back.
I do have a couple other questions.
Can we hold off on that? I'd like to circle back, any other questions or comments from the board specifically?
About the presentation?
And relative to the, yeah, the presentation?
No.
Yeah, I, I would like to circle back with my board colleagues and, and maybe a little bit of feedback as I've reflected on the actions that have been worn tonight. I put myself often through this process in the seat of a community member, listening to the board deliberate on this issue and going through various presentations and iterations. And part of me has had the reaction of, particularly as we've introduced this budget with a significant increase, this, this is a board that's run amok. I've been on this board, I'm going into my fifteenth year now, and this has been a disciplined and thorough process, and as frustrating as it is to be putting these two items of significance in front of the community, I also feel like, as a board member, I have no choice, because it's, it's a lot of time and effort that's brought us to this. I, I also wanna thank administration, obviously, and I wanna thank specifically, we're a five-member board, so we really ask board members to step up individually and serve on working committees, and I know I've done that a number of times over the years, but I do wanna thank Bridgette, who stepped up first, and then more recently Brian, who stepped up to serve on the working committee of the master planning and visioning, to kind of do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that have informed the board of their decisions. When this process started years ago, I know I looked at some of the initial infra-, infrastructure requirements that were identified in phase one, and that number in and of itself is, is a significant number. We've identified about fifty-five million in infrastructure requirements of the middle school and high school, in line with what, what Bridgette and others have said, that fall into the category of doing nothing is not going to be an option. It is the result of the significance of that number that caused the board to authorize phase two of the study, which is to say, you know, should we really be looking at a renovation or possibly a build that might better serve the needs of the district going out the next fifty or sixty years? And that, that discussion really led to the fact that there became very little material differentiation between a renovation that would cause a lot of disruption for students and staff, that added very little educational value, and that really was kind of retrofitting sixty-year-old buildings with the high potential that we've, we've added nothing to, to serve the student population of the community. I looked back at some notes, and I'll, I'll just share briefly the, the notes that I found, and I'll, I'll tell you the relevance in one second, but it really was acknowledging the process, the input from a variety of stakeholders, the arduous process, and a reminder that the district had been looking at this for a number of years. There's obviously an incredible amount of pride in our schools, there's an incredible amount of financial support for our schools, and there's an interest in a future where schools continue to play an integral part in attracting and retaining homeowners and community members, as well as employers and employees. From the start, I believe there were sort of two visions that drive change, one being dissatisfaction with the current situation, which would include a real or perceived crisis, and the other being a compelling aspirational vision and goal that unifies and rallies the community and needed resources. Some of the guiding principles at this particular juncture were my belief that structure should follow strategy, whether it's organizational structure, process, or physical space, the certainty that we, as the SB school system, do now and desire to continue to provide a quality education to the twenty-five-hundred-plus students that come through our doors each day, the certainty that change is inevitable, and that a lot of smart people have been looking with us and providing feedback throughout this process. And I can't thank the people enough who have come to these meetings, many of the planning sessions before, and who will come to these future meetings that we've scheduled before a vote, to educate themselves and to make an informed decision around a significant investment that we're considering. At the time I wrote that, there was an old Orson Welles commercial back in the seventies which promised to sell no wine before its time, and that timing and timeframe for decisions like these are also part of an overall strategy, that part of the job we do along with administration is to recognize symptoms or trigger points that might necessitate change well in advance of a crisis or failure to deliver on our district's end policies, in effect, to mitigate risks by anticipating emerging needs. And lastly, for our students and staff to provide a safe and secure environment in which to teach and learn, a program of continuous improvement in preparing students for their next steps, an organizational and physical structure with enough flexibility and nimbleness to absorb some variability in operations, whether it be an enrollment, tuition, student, state or federal mandates, funding requirements, security improvements, and so forth, and all at a cost the community will support. And my point in bringing these comments up is, these were comments I made at a 2016 meeting that was talking about master planning and visioning. And I have had the challenge and the fortune of really sitting with a lot of the folks around this table, and a lot of community members, staff members, and students who have provided input. And I look at this as an obligation I have as a board member to bring the choice to the community. There's no question on this board, and certainly in my mind, that this is not a significant ask. We also feel, I feel very strongly that I have been persuaded through the process that- the process that this is the time to ask. It's not going to get any less expensive on a going-forward basis. I feel like there's been a lot of discipline engaged in the process. And I also feel like, and I know there's been a reluctance to kind of commit to specific numbers, but if, if I kind of leverage my experience and look at the back-of-the-napkin math, that $55 million investment in infrastructure that would happen under the same conditions or assumptions that we've made here represent about 20 to 20, 25 to 30% of the numbers that were shown on either the income sensitized or the tax, the annual tax value on, on a home. So by way of example, that $1,500 on a $350,000 home, about 25% of that is incorporated in those minimal, the do-nothings, or not, the, we can-do-nothing scenario of infrastructure improvements at the middle and high school. So I feel that obligation is through this process to take that decision to the voters. I believe it will be a very personal decision. I believe it will be values-based. I believe that the information, Jerry, to your question, I think what's provided, based on the assumptions we've made, and interest rates can change, timing of the bonds can change, but the outline of what we've given in terms of the annual impact and the average over the life of the bond is what I think, whether you're income sensitized or not, is what I think voters will have to consider in their decision, should the board make the decision to put this on the ballot this evening. So personally speaking, this conversation's been going on a long time. I look at this, at, there's, I, I have to say, I've been brought somewhat reluctantly along, but I can say with all honesty that it's been over a number of years and listening to a lot of input. And this is a legacy project for South Burlington, no doubt. There are a lot of implications for the state, and that's really the comments I wanted to share with the board. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, is it correct that you had only two bids for this, this building project?
As I said during the presentation, the only bids we had were for pre-construction services, which was a tiny, tiny award to do cost estimation. And so, we can, I don't even know if we considered it as a board because it ended up being under $50,000 of pre-construction services. As I said during the presentation, the big, full amount of, the construction project would be bid out during those 11 months that would be following the bond. So there's, there is still an award that would have to be made to a construction company to actually do the work. So that has not been bid out yet.
Do you have an, an idea of how many bids you'd be looking for?
We would reach out widely and, and present the RFP to a, a lot of different companies. I have no way of knowing how many would respond to the project.
If by law, we're required to submit requests for proposals, and people can bid on those, any number of folks can bid on those.
Within-state or also without a state?
Both.
Both.
I don't know. But, but point being that we often, as a district, I've, I've been surprised over the years, some of the things we've bid out, that we often don't get a lot of responses. I would hope this may not be the case with, with this, should it go forward, but...
Would you also perhaps consider doing only, only part of this? Because we're talking a lot of money here.
Doing, I'm sorry?
You don't do the whole project, do part of it.
There's been, there's been a lot of thought given into, given to a variety of scenarios as we've gone along, and it has been the board's decision to move this scenario forward, in part for some of the reasons I articulated in my comments, which is the renovation side, which the price tag got, started to creep up significantly, largely due to things like materials that we would have to remediate, for instance, that are in all our buildings, to, you know, load-bearing walls, to ADA compliance, to things like that. So those costs of renovations started creeping up so close to the higher number, the board really made the decision to look at something that added longer-term and incremental value.
One last question. So what do you project would be the increase in the number of students that this new building would house? How much growth is there in that? How many years?
Well, we've projected, we have enrollment projections that we've indicated here, but what we-
As the, as the architects were designing, they designed for an increase of 125 students at the high school to get to 1,050 total, because we started the year with about 925, or maybe not started the year, but whenever we started looking at the design, so maybe a little before the start of the school year, we were estimating the school year would start with 925 students. Our demographer projects that we'll have another 125 over the next 10 years. Once you get out past 10 years, it's kind of hard to make assumptions about demographics. And so they basically think that it will level out, but it's hard to tell how much housing will be approved. Those demographic projections are based on just the housing that was in the permitting stage, that was pretty far along, really permitted, not in the permitting stage, was permitted at the time the demographic projections were done, and that was about a year ago. So that includes some of the stuff in city center. It does not include some of the things that are under discussion, like, like the big one on Dorset Street and, and some of those, but it includes the ones that are being built by the O'Briens in the, in the southeast quadrant. And then it assumes that the middle school will add about 70 students over the same time period. The core spaces of the buildings, the cafeterias, the gyms, those kinds of spaces are being designed so that they're flexible enough, if, if we were to have a, a significant increase beyond that, those spaces would not need to be expanded. So there's a little extra capacity in those spaces. When it comes to classrooms, we're making sure that we're being careful about the design on the property where it's located, and that the buildings are flexible enough to accept if we saw a really big increase, you know, say, other schools closed in the area or something, and we saw a big influx of students, that there is space on the property and there's flexibility in the buildings that additions could be put on at some stage in the future if that really was necessitated. For what it's worth, the demographer says in his practice, what he's seen is that a community that builds a new high school sees about a 5% increase in new students just because of that new build, and a slightly lower percentage increase for building a new middle school. But really, the, the demographic projections don't take those increases into account. They only are based on how properties are selling in South Burlington or were selling a year ago, how much housing is permitted and what type of housing that is. So he more heavily waits, my understanding is he more heavily waits single-family homes because those tend to produce more students than multifamily housing. So far this year, that's not really been our experience. We've seen an enrollment bump even just in the last few weeks, based on the new building that's opening on Market Street, which is obviously a multifamily building. So we've done our best. We had to sort of pick a number to design to, and we designed to that 1,050 number at the high school, was really the basis for what we did.
Sheldon?
What efforts, if any, have you made to obtain private funding for this? Have you made any efforts?
We have not at this stage.
Okay, and why not?
Because a project has to-
Have you reached out to anybody?
A project has to be approved before anybody would consider that, and our understanding from the architects and other projects, there's not a lot of private funding out there for this type of a project.
So you're not going to make any more efforts to, for private funding?
I can't say that we will not make any efforts.
Hasn't been part of the conversation.
It hasn't been part of the conversation yet.
Now, obviously taxes are going to go up a lot. Have you taken into consideration the impact on families whose children just don't fit into the model provided by South Burlington School District and would rather, you know, seek an alternative, but this couldn't really push them over the top and make it unaffordable? Have you made, have you considered those families at all?
I think people individually make that decision today, so they would continue to make that decision. I, I think we've designed a lot of flexibility into our program to meet a lot of kids' different needs, but...
Right, but not everybody fits in, right?
But we-
I think families make different decisions.
Every, everybody fits in. Well, but, but a consideration is, is they're already paying for this, and then they've got to pay additional, and then they've got to pay not only for what you currently offer, but for this gold-plated new facility that, you know, but still, it's not a good fit, and they want to go somewhere else, but now they can't because they're paying, you know, $600 or $1,000 a year extra.
We currently work hard to, to make sure that kids are fitting in, and we would continue to see that as an important part of our objective in the future, mostly working to have flexible pathways within our, within our system to allow kids to be, you know, excited about their learning. And so we do have a multitude of, of avenues available, and yes, there are certain situations that are currently in place where we need to help students find alternatives. That would likely continue to be available, although we would hope that we would be able to meet most of their needs within our, within our system.
So, for example, you meet the needs of, of families whose children may be interested in, more interested in a more religiously-based education?
No, we don't, we don't-
You don't meet those, okay.
Right, and those are personal choices, Sheldon, I would say, for families.
Well, no, I know, they're personal choices, but, but if this bond passes, it's not a personal choice of whether you've got to pay the additional taxes or not.
No, we can't control, we can't control those particular things.
Well, I think some more questions have been asked about folks whose kids have already gone through the system or those who don't have children. I mean, it's the same kind of proposal for those sorts of people.
Uh, yeah, similar, yeah, but not, not entirely. So, I did a little bit of back-of-the-envelope, and, you know, with a lot of different, of course, you have to make a lot of different assumptions, but I thought the ones I made were reasonable. And based on the numbers that I've seen that were published, all other things being equal, the fair market value of your property because of these new taxes is going to be reduced by 10 to 15%. Okay? And I think those are pretty reasonable, because as you know, if you've got a housing budget of $2,500, that's your budget. And if the taxes are higher, then your budget for how much house you can afford is lower. So 10 to 15% off your fair market value. Are you going to be publishing any sort of information on that in connection with this vote?
We're publishing information that asks people to vote on what this investment would be and hope they'll look at their personal situation on the chart with the assumptions that were made.
Well, I understand that, but, but, you know, federal law, again, going back to the mortgage situation, federal law requires all sorts of disclosures. So one of the disclosures you can make is that the, the value of your house may decline by 10 or 15%.
And Sheldon, the value of your house could also go up because people want to move to this community-
Okay.
-so their children can go to school here. I've been in, I've lived in other communities that have very high housing costs, and people do what they need to do to move into those communities because the schools are so good. So you're making assumptions all on one side, there are assumptions on the other side as well. It's impossible to tell at this stage what the impact would be. So therefore, there's no disclosure that we can make about that because you're making all kinds of assumptions.
And I said, other things being equal. Okay, so that, that's, that's a fair point. That, but, but what, what is also fair is that we know with these extra taxes, all other things being equal, and I know maybe they're not, but all other things being equal, your property value is going to decline by 10 or 15%. Now, what evidence do you have? What evidence can I look at that there will be an offset? And where are those numbers? Have you done any studies at all?
Can, can I make just a comment? I, I don't think we should get involved in commenting on or looking at other people's analysis for it. We, we need to present what we have to present. We, we shouldn't be saying, okay, well, your analysis is right in these ways, wrong in the other ways, we disagree with it. In one way, we agree with it. Another way, you know, we need to present what we want, you know, we need to present what we're, what we're doing.
One side.
And we've got very specific laws that say how, how we present it, and there are facts involved with it. And I think when you started to get, you know, doing analysis of what the impact on this is or that is, you know, how many kids are going to move in here, how many people want to come here to raise a family versus if we don't do it, that starts to get into opinions, and I don't think it's within our scope to comment on it.
Okay.
You know, anybody can say what they want, but we've got a, a more narrower focus than what you're asking us to say.
Well, I, I mean, you know, the extra taxes, if everyone's got a housing budget, the extra taxes are going to cut into how much house you can afford.
And we're not going to comment on other people's housing budgets.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, may I finish? May I finish? I, I was in the middle of a sentence.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Ms. Burkhardt represented that it very well may, could go up, and I'm asking for evidence of that because this should be an evidence-based analysis, and you should be providing all of the evidence that you have and admitting when you don't have that evidence.
We're not presenting evidence on either side.
We're not making a claim that housing prices are going to go up or go down. So therefore, I, I think you're asking for things that are just not relevant to people's decisions as they go to the, to the voting.
How could it not be relevant when you're losing fair market value of your house?
Because you're speculating, because you're spec-
I'm not, I'm not spec, I'm not speculating at all. You have, I mean, is it not true that everyone has a housing budget, and if it goes into taxes, it does not go into equity? Is that speculation?
You're citing figures of 10 to 15%. We have no evidence of that, and we've presented nothing in terms of people moving in and housing prices going up, or household budgets going down, and house prices going down. We've done neither. The only person doing it is you.
All right, well, the only person thinking, I have another question.
I'm going to, I have, Eric, and it's Jerry now.
So I think I have some fact-based questions, I hope. I want to make sure I heard you correctly, Bridget. Did you say or do you believe that the middle school and high school have reached the end of their useful life? You said that, and I just want to make sure, do you mean that? Do you think both of these buildings have reached the end of their useful life?
In terms of their infrastructure systems, yes, I do.
So having read, I think, every one of the documents you've all produced, I think your position contrasts with the 2008 report of Dorwood here, which in their summary slide said, "The buildings have maintained well, have been maintained well, and the capital improvement projects are a good first start to bringing these buildings up to where they should be," and that is in terms of everybody's desire. That's what the summary slide said. With the 2019 summary slide, those two pieces of information disappeared. What disappeared was the buildings have been well-maintained, gone. What disappeared was the capital improvement project we put forth is a good first start, gone. Everything else was there.
In almost every presentation, we've referred to the buildings being well-maintained. Those two are not the same thing.
Uh, so I just want to know, do you think the buildings have reached the end of their useful life? I just want to know. I mean, is it-
I've answered your question, Jerry.
Okay, fine. Then here's the second part. I went over critically the $31 million assessment, which, which had a specific list of things to be done and their cost. Then we moved up to the $55 million, and I exchanged emails with you, and you gave me some of the additional course, but I've never been able to go from a $31 million figure to the $55 million figure. I've gotten some way there, maybe to 45, but I've never gotten all the way up to 55. So here's a request. Can you show me how we went from 31 to 55? Because sometimes in the emails you sent, it seemed like you were double-counting, like new sprinkler systems were in the original project and in the additional course to go to 55 million, and that to me is double-counting. I, I, I've looked at all the documents. I have not found a detailed analysis of how you go from 31 million to 55 million. The information may be there, I've just never found it. Now, Elizabeth, you said $55 million is now one quarter of this. Well, 55 million is different than 31 million. So if we really do have data which shows how we went from 31 to 55, I'd like to see it, because I've looked very hard, and I could only find part of it. So that's an important piece of information.
Rob, I don't need you to comment on very specific line item numbers, but can you explain the difference between the 31 million and the 55 to 60 million, a little, a little bit, at the high level?
Sure. Yep. So when we did the original study, we were preparing a capital improvement plan and looking for specific items on a line-by-line basis that the school district would, because what they had been doing for years is just on a very reactive basis. Things would come up and they would say, hey, we've got to jump on this, it's an emergency. And so the effort was, let's look at, you know, what items we should prioritize and pick off on an annual basis. And so that was that original, you know, 31 million value. When we began to look at it as a baseline project for, let's say, a complete renovation, then you look at it in a different lens, because now you're doing a complete renovation, you're not just picking up little parts and pieces that you may or may not do. And so when you look at it in a total of, okay, this is a complete renovation, then it begins to trigger by code other things, like seismic reinforcing of walls, like full sprinkler systems over the entire building, like full accessibility over all the doors and all of the openings and all of the areas throughout the building. And, and so there are other things that are triggered by looking at it through this other lens of full renovation. And that's where the $55 million, uh, they- And that's where the fifty-five million dollar figure came in, when we looked at it as a, as a full infrastructure renovation of the entire building, not just a piecemeal, you know, cafeteria list line item.
So basically, you did a reassessment when you went to a full upgrade, and basically the thirty-one then got diverted to a fifty-five because there was more extensive work in a full renovation. But just so I know for sure, there's no line item for the thirty-one to fifty-five program? Would that be correct? This was just an understanding you had as architects who have done this all the time? You knew the cost would go up if you met all the new codes that went along with the thirty-one million?
You didn't just pick out a number out of it.
No, never. So what I'm saying...
I'm just saying, because we didn't do that.
And I've never seen the numbers, though. That's the only reason I'm asking. I'm not trying to be argumentative. I've looked in these reports, and I haven't found the numbers. I do, I do much better with numbers when I can understand what somebody's trying to do, and I never found the numbers.
Maybe you looked at the project through a different lens, and looked at the totality of what the scope of work would be needed to renovate the entire buildings, and that was the cost that was developed as a result of that analysis.
I also thought, Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, that part of the jump from thirty-one to fifty-five was that all of a sudden, instead of looking at à la carte problems, we were looking at doing a project which would involve bringing in temporary trailers for the kids, all of which roll away at the end of the four or five years, right?
That's, that's one aspect of that, yes.
And that's the number I have. That's the number Bridgette sent to me on the cost of bringing in trailers. I have that.
But I think that's a big driver, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question on how the information's doled out. I haven't been to these meetings, so I read the other paper. And I'll tell you, over the last four or five months, I have no clue how much it was going to be. It started at a hundred and twenty million, then it went up to one fifty, then one seventy, and that was coming out of the other paper and different articles, and now we're up to three hundred and sixty-seven, you know, including everything. So, you know, like tonight's notice for this meeting, you should have had a proposed school budget of two hundred and nine million, you know, instead of just... Well, not plus interest, just two hundred and nine million. And I think a lot more people would have come.
Well, I'm not sure what numbers got reported, but I know the board's been pretty disciplined about trying not to report a number till we had the cost estimator's information, which came very early this year.
But if on the notices you showed, put down, hey, the budget roughly proposed at two hundred and nine million.
I mean, we've... Bad interest, because it's there.
Again, we've worked hard, we've worked hard, you know, and will continue to work hard. I think we were taking feedback tonight, and as we continue to move forward to the March timeframe, we want to make sure information is available. And as I think what Elizabeth said, is we want folks to be informed, we want them to be able to go into the voting booth and make the decision that they need to. And there are some nuances that you're all reporting, and again, our other paper, who's here tonight, you know, work hard to try to report with clarity, but it is, there's a lot of different pieces. And fairness to the board, you know, as they went down the path to continue this work, I mean, there were some time, we didn't have the actual, we didn't have the actual end cost, because that was in process. It wasn't really until the eighth that they got, the eighth of January, that they got that actual cost. We had the general estimate out to compare those options, which the board alluded to, which made them, allowed them to make the decision to do the two new. But in retrospect, they didn't have the final cost, because there was a lot of work going on to kind of hone that in, and to do the pricing work that you saw that was done by an outside firm and then our own local. We wanted that, that local firm, we wanted to be able to compare that and look at those variables.
We're sticker shock.
Yeah, no, we understand, and again, I think for folks, again, there's, there's pieces that we're taking away, and Jerry's wanting a little more detail on the fifty-five million, it's good, and we hear, we hear what you're saying.
And I think there was sticker shock for each of the five of us, too. I mean, this was an iterative process, yeah. And so there are these two public sessions coming up that Bridgette talked about, and so for or against, please encourage friends and neighbors to come.
Put the brace down when you have to part...
Yeah, no, we're putting it out there as much as we can.
All right, so we've got a little more work to do. Let's do two more questions, and we're going to move on.
I have a bunch more questions, and I think you're cutting me off. You didn't cut anybody else off.
It's all right, Sheldon, I'd be happy, listen, we'd be happy. We have things to do, and I'm happy to dedicate some time with you and others to answer your questions in a timely way.
I waited here for a long time to ask you...
We're happy to give you a amount of time to do that.
So, and this is the time, this was the meeting when this was being discussed. Okay, so, software being what it is, it would be easy enough, I would think, putting aside for a moment the issue of income sensitivity, that you could provide every single homeowner in the city with the, you know, based on their, the value, the current value of their home, with exactly how much their, their taxes would go up, and you could list the assumptions, including, this doesn't include income sensitivity, because you probably don't have access to that information. But that would be any, that would be an easy thing to do. Is there any reason you can't do that?
I think the grid was decided upon because Gary did put up that sort of a calculator before, or maybe we had a link to it, and there were some sorts of bugs with it? Was that not the case?
That would be something you could get with the assessor with.
Some of the district's past calculators have been problematic.
We felt the chart was probably the most logical way to do that, Sheldon, and the chart that, that's actually on the table, to give the best, again, there's a fair amount of variables that go into that, and we felt that that was the best way to be as transparent as we could, from both property and income.
Sorry, I didn't mean to assert that this one was wrong.
That's driving this is space, as I understand it. I mean, I understand you're talking about a lot of other sort of more abstract things, but space, so, which my understanding is the space problems may be in the elementary schools, not in middle school and high school, but in any event, how much income do you get from each tuition high school student, and what is the incremental cost of each tuition student?
Well, it's announced tuition rate, so that's part of what we, the board does. They adopt an announced and allowable tuition rate that we can charge.
Right, so what is it roughly now?
For two thousand twenty-one, it will be just a little over sixteen thousand per student.
Sixteen, and what's the cost of each incremental student?
Again, we, we don't, we don't figure that out that way. I think there's a whole litany of variables that would go into that, from, you know, subtract out busing, or put in busing, put in, you know, so we don't, we don't have that broken down. I mean, people can do the back of the napkin, and I know Jerry has, and I've had questions about just taking the total budget divided by the total number of students, and again, that's, doesn't have what I believe is a fair, a fair assessment, but people do it a variety of ways.
Well, to the extent that space is a, is a driver here of this project, and it's, I think, aside from all those abstract things, it's, it's a driver, is that maybe you, maybe you curtail the, the tuitioning program, so that, so that you, you know, you're serving people in the community, because the incremental cost, it seems to be tuition now, is two hundred and twenty million dollars. That's the way, that's the way it could be looked at, and I think it's a reasonable way to look at it. The other thing you could do, maybe, is, okay, you get sixteen thousand dollars for a tuitioning student. You offer that, you know, it's kind of like you go to the airport and you've got a reservation. They say, well, we oversold this plane, how much, you know, we, we'll give you five hundred dollars if you don't get on this plane. Well, you can give, with these tuitioning students, you can give sixteen thousand dollars tuition certificates to South Burlington students who don't, you know, who don't, you know, want, who want maybe an alternative, want a religious-based institution, or want something that, that's just not being offered in South Burlington. Or maybe things, they don't want things that are being offered in South Burlington. So, have you thought about that?
No.
Okay, so that's a space, so...
So we're going to move on to the, no, I'm going to ask Sheldon if you could take...
You want to recess, you can recess.
No, if you could just, we really do have a long agenda, and some of the questions you're asking are making assumptions that...
I'm not making any assumptions. But anyway, so have you thought about, have you thought, well, have you thought about, about character building at all? So, the message that you're sending with this building is, yeah, you know, students, you really deserve the gold-plated building that we're going to build you. And you haven't done anything to deserve it necessarily, but you deserve it. And maybe I'm overstating that a little bit, but I always think of Abe Lincoln, who's one of the greatest Americans ever, and he didn't go to a gold-plated high school, he didn't go to a high school at all, and he didn't go to grade school at all, and he was self-taught. So, you know, have you thought about the character building of, you know, okay, yeah, so maybe we're a little bit tight here, maybe we don't always have a space to meet where we want, when we want it? Have you thought about that at all? That maybe, you know, you can't get everything you want without some cost to you? Have you thought about that?
Our ends policy has been included in all of our deliberations.
I don't, no, but this is a...
And that includes disposition for lifelong learning, academic proficiency, personal development, and citizenship, so yes, it is included.
And what about character? Have you thought about the, the specific instance, though, that, look, you can't get everything you want in life, because I know that especially kids think that, you know, there's no cost to anything, and that you can get everything they want, they don't have to make hard decisions.
For a long time, in this community, we're not obligated to answer everyone whose hypothetical questions.
Why not? You're an elected official, answer the question!
We take these as comments, we can take this, thank you for your comment.
You not have an answer?
Appropriate answer for them. We already answered it as well already, so...
Chair, would you like to answer the question?
Other questions that you have on an offline basis.
We do need to move on, and I was fair in saying we need to move on with the agenda, but I would encourage anybody to please direct questions, either to David or through the board. We, we're available at sbschoolboards.com, no, dot net, sorry.
Do any other board members have any answer to that question, or are you all avoiding it?
So could we get a summary of, there's three action items tied to the bond. I think it would be helpful for the board to hear what the expectations are of those three.
Yeah, so I need some help in this area, because it is very legal, legally specific. So by your place is the actual information from Bob Fletcher, and has some highlights on it actually, explaining, and I think it would, it might be good for folks just to review it. This is the legal language required. It, it does go over about, talks specifically about the necessity resolution, so you have a resolution, which is in part, and it is on your agenda for action. And then you have the, the, the actual bond language that you have to have in there. So, I am struggling with, you know, to, to explain the legal words here, so it's probably easier for you just to read through it, and, and to...
So this is addressing both language required by statute to, that make the warning and the ballot, address the warning and...
And the ballot.
Well, okay, so this is the warning and the ballot item.
Correct.
Isn't always say seven o'clock in the afternoon when we warn these things? I've not noticed the afternoon instead of evening before.
Days are getting longer, you know.
Ton of actual wording.
It means you have to be done by midnight.
So this necessity resolution has to be part and tied to the final form of the warning. So again, we've taken very specific direction from the attorney, which is one outlined in your action items, and then correlates to the actual language for all of the articles, three articles.
Well, it would be helpful for the board, I mean, rather than reading the legal comment, can we kind of take these one at a time? And this resolution of necessity, sorry, the agenda item is resolution of necessity for capital construction project. Can you or Gary speak to that?
The necessity resolution is what you're speaking about. Alls I can say is, it's the vehicle for approval of the warning in the form of the ballot. It's a required, it's required, this resolution. I can't really tell you, I don't understand the specifics of the, of the law in which governs these particular pieces, but this has all been provided to us by our legal counsel on how we do that. So, in retrospect, I would have probably been good to have our legal counsel here, but I didn't do that.
But he did send a cover letter explaining this.
So I think, so the second item before we cover it is authorization for issuance of general obligation debt for school construction. And the third one is declaration of official intent of South Burlington School District to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness.
I mean, Gary or Emmett, if you have something to add, you know, that provides clarity, then I'm certain...
This is the declaration that allows you to, to take the pre-bond costs and include them in the, in the two hundred and nine million dollars that you're borrowing.
Okay, so in lieu of having legal counsel here, I think it, I think we should read through these.
Yes.
Each. So I will go through the agenda item four, resolution of necessity for capital construction project, which is worn for action. And this states, resolved at a special meeting of the Board of School Directors of the City of South Burlington School District on January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, it was determined that the public interest and necessity demand that the district undertake a capital construction project to construct a new high school and a new middle school on lands owned by the district located in South Burlington, Vermont. More particularly, construction of physical facilities, installation of utilities and mechanical systems, together with related professional fees and project costs, at an estimated total cost of two hundred and nine million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And be it further resolved that the costs of the projects are too great to be paid out of the annual revenue and available resources of the district. And be it further resolved that no state school construction aid funding is presently available to finance any portion of the project costs, leaving the district responsible for all costs of the project. And be it further resolved that a proposal for the issuance of general obligation bonds of the district in the aggregate amount not to exceed two hundred and nine million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars to pay for the project should be submitted to the legal voters of the district at the district's annual meeting to be duly called, warned, and held on March third, two thousand and twenty. And be it further resolved that the board will hold a public information hearing on the bond issue proposition on March second, two thousand and twenty, at seven o'clock in the afternoon at F. H. Tuttle Middle School Cafeteria. Be it further resolved that all acts relating to the proposition of incurred bonding indebtedness and the issuance of general obligation bonds of the district for the purpose of designing, constructing, and making said improvements within the corporate limits of the district be in accordance with the provisions of chapter fifty-three of title twenty-four, and chapters nine, eleven, twenty-one, and one twenty-three of title sixteen, Vermont statutes annotated. And be it further resolved that the attached warning and form of ballot are specifically adopted for use in connection with consideration of the above-stated proposition of making said public improvements and incurring bond indebtedness, therefore... That was a mouthful.
So are you looking for an action one at a time on these? So do you need a motion to approve this resolution of necessity for capital construction project?
We'll do action one at a time on these.
Okay.
So, so before we do the motions, just make it a comment, because it's like three of these, at least three of these relate to the bond...
these, at least three of these relate to the bond and the other one for the budget. And I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm going to vote for these. And if I just make a quick statement about my rationale for that, I think that before we vote on it, it might be appropriate as opposed to, I don't know which one we would open for discussion of all these that we're doing, but essentially, I think that this started even further back than your statement that you read from 2016. And it started when we looked at master planning and visioning for the elementary schools. And through that long, drawn-out, difficult process, what we really determined is that we didn't need to move at that time with our elementary schools, infrastructure, but instead, we really, and heard this from many community members who were paying close attention to this process, that really was the high school and the middle school that needed the attention. And that's what kicked off this process that has been going on for the last few years. So, and we've looked very closely. We've, we've worked with administration. We've worked with the experts, the expertise that we have with our administration as far as what we need to deliver the exemplary education that this community has supported for, for the last 50, 60 years and, I believe, expects. And I think that's where this budget comes to, and I think that's where this bond comes to, that I think we need to take this to the community because this is our best understanding based on many hours with experts, both within our school and outside, that this is what we need to do to keep our education, the public education in this city as exemplary as it has been for the last 50, 60 years, for the next 50, 60 years. And that's why I'm going to be supporting both the bond and, and the budget, so that the community can weigh in if that's the direction they want us to keep on going.
Is there a motion on the resolution of necessity for capital construction project as read?
I move that we approve the resolution of necessity for capital construction project as read.
I second that.
Further discussion? I do have a question. I don't know if it'll show up because we're reading these independently, but I do, I would ask the question, and maybe this can be approved, or I don't know what the role of the board is, but on any one of these, should we say, because it references estimated total cost, should we be saying somewhere in there, and I guess I'd look to legal counsel, exclusive of interest or, because that's an unknown right now. We're modeling assumptions. I think we're going to be transparent when a homeowner looks at the chart, but I don't know if this particular one should say exclusive of interest on here or not, a bond interest.
I don't know that. I mean, I'm, I'm quite certain that if they felt that, that it could be included, other items might be included too, but I don't, I don't know. We can certainly ask Elizabeth about, given the feedback that you received tonight, whether or not.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at the wording as we're get, as the board is getting it. And I guess I would like to be able to ask, we don't have to delay approval, but ask legal counsel whether that, they may have better language, or there may be no requirement for the language, but to say.
Understand.
Something that intimates exclusive of bond or interest.
So, should we vote on each of these, and then we can have a separate motion that we would approve?
To look into those.
Well, and we, we would approve those if we could add that language and use that as a replacement.
Well, we're, we're taking action on these separately based on the warrant agenda, so I, I think we can still take a vote with that, the same way we would take action on a policy governance where we'd say, we'd like the superintendent to follow up with a certain piece of data or something like that.
And so, so is it, so would the motion essentially be, though, that we would approve this with or without that additional language? You know, if we can put that language in, put it in.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. I would just want the counsel from legal on whether.
Right, right.
Yeah. It's, I'm not, I'm not suggesting a friendly amendment that says only with that.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying approve this, but the approval would also go if we're allowed to put that language in.
Correct.
I guess that's kind of my friendly amendment is to just make that clear, that we don't have to, we don't have to reconvene to come back and vote on it again.
So, you accepted, and you're looking for additional clarity whether or not exclusive of interest could be.
Well, it's not an additional clarity. If we can put it in, if it's legally allowed.
Then put it in.
Put it in.
See no problem with that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. We'll move on to the agenda item five, authorization for issuance of general obligation debt for school construction. And maybe I can enlist, oh, I'm sorry, it's on the back of this one. Could I enlist another board member to provide a reading?
I'll do this one. It's a short one. This is authorization to issue general obligation debt for capital construction. The South Burlington School District Board of School Directors proposes to incur bonded indebtedness for the purpose of financing construction of a new high school and a new middle school on properties located at 505 and 550 Dorset Street at a total project cost of $209,588,828. It is expected that 0% of the project will be eligible for state school construction aid and therefore 100% of the project cost, $209,588,828, will be the responsibility of the South Burlington School District. So, shall the bonds of the South Burlington School District in and out not to exceed $209,588,828 and zero $100 be issued for the purpose of financing construction of a new high school and a new middle school on the properties located at 505 and 550 Dorset Street? State funds may not be available at the time this project is otherwise eligible to receive state school construction aid. The district is responsible for all costs incurred in connection with any borrowing done in anticipation of state school construction aid. Is that all I had to read? Not the official ballot and the next.
It's the same thing, article two, same, exactly, same.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the authorization to issue general obligation debt for capital construction.
I second that.
Second? Discussion? I did want to just clarify, we had, we had a question on this agenda item come from the public about, this is not an authorization to issue the debt, or the board is not voting on the authorization to issue debt, it's voting on the article language that would appear in front of the voters, just for clarification on that.
It is the same point with respect to the adding the not inclusive of.
The clause about interest.
Of interest, yeah.
So, you want to include that?
I mean, it would make sense here, too, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Article six is declaration of official intent of South Burlington School District to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness. Is that, that's not on?
No.
Okay, so that is.
It's the brown one.
The brown one.
I'll volunteer to read this one.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay. Declaration of official intent of South Burlington School District to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness. Whereas, the South Burlington School District, the issuer, believes that it is necessary and therefore intends to construct a new high school and middle school buildings on the property owned by the issuer at 500 to 550 Dorset Street, South Burlington, Vermont, in parentheses, the project. And whereas, the issuer expects to pay certain capital expenditures, note quote-unquote the reimbursement expenditures, in connection with the project prior to the issuance of indebtedness to finance costs associated with the project on a long-term basis. Whereas, the issuer reasonably expects that for that part of the project consisting of capital construction costs, debt obligations, in an amount not expected to exceed $209,588,828 will be issued, and that certain of the proceeds of such debt obligations will be used to reimburse the reimbursement expenditures. And whereas, the issuer declares its reasonable official intent to reimburse its prior expenditures for the above described part of the project with proceeds of a subsequent borrowing. Now, therefore, the issuer declares, section one, the issuer finds and determines that the foregoing recitals are true and correct, and that all of the capital expenditures covered by this resolution were or will be made no earlier than 60 days prior to the date of this resolution. Section two, the declaration is made solely for the purposes of establishing compliance with the requirements of section 1.150-2 of the Treasury Regulations. This declaration does not mind the issuer to make any expenditure, incur any indebtedness, or proceed with the project. Section three, the issuer hereby declares its official intent to use the proceeds of indebtedness to reimburse itself for reimbursement expenditures within 18 months of either the date of the first expenditure of funds by issuer for such project, or the date that such project is placed in service, whichever is later, parentheses, but in no event more than three years after the date of the original expenditure of issuer funds for such project, end parentheses, and to allocate an amount not to exceed $400,000 of the project, proceeds thereof, to reimburse itself for its expenditures in connection with the project. And the last sentence is adopted and approved at a meeting of the issuer's Board of School Directors duly called, noted, and held on January blank, 2020, but I'm going to fill in 15 for that since that's today.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the declaration of official intent of South Burlington School District to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I just wanted to understand the second clause of section one better, that all of the capital expenditures covered by this resolution were or will be made no earlier than 60 days prior to the date of this resolution. So, this $400,000 is what is being spent on pre-design work, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And so, when does it have to be done? So, that, that was covered when our, when our attorney advised us on the $350,000, and he wrote the language based on that so it can be reimbursed. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I want to clarify just those three items related to the bond. One was, I'm going to characterize the resolution of necessity as really almost a certificate of need that was generated. The number five would be the article language that will appear on the ballot to the voters as authorization to issue general obligation debt for capital construction. And number six was the intent to reimburse, in the event of an approved bond, reimburse expenses that we've incurred to date in terms of the pre-engineering work. A fair summary?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to agenda item seven, which is consider the school district budget for FY 2021. And where's our actual? Okay, so the, well, that's, this is the warning. So, we have a separate.
There's not a separate.
You just have to, there's nothing written, it's just adopting the budget as presented.
Right after the warning, second page. In the past, you've simply read that.
Well, that's, we've got a separate warning.
That's a separate warning for the, that's for the warning.
Oh, for the meeting, okay. So, all right, for the budget. Let me have the one, did we fill in?
So, does the warning have to be approved tonight? Because it doesn't have the numbers, all the numbers in it.
It does, we do have, we have an updated version.
Oh, okay, all right.
Well, and you have to approve the budget before you can put the number in.
Right.
So.
That's what the action item on number seven means, is that you've decided that you will adopt the budget as presented or changed, whatever. That's the part we're, you're acting on for number seven.
Okay, so first, I will ask, is there a motion to approve the budget for FY 2020 in the amount of $55,865?
FY 21. It's FY 21.
Okay, let me start over. Do I have a motion to approve the school district budget for FY 2021 in the amount of $55,865,686 as recommended by administration?
So moved.
Alex is seconding?
Well, I'll second, I don't, I don't.
Discussion? I will offer, this is a tough one in the series of budgets. I, I am persuaded that administration has done thorough diligence, and I thank Gary, Amity, David, and all the folks who've worked on this budget. It's challenging to be bringing that budget this particular year to the community. I do think it reflects the needs of the school district accurately. And, you know, if you could look, could look back five years and say, these, these would hit at the same time, I think, you know, it would have been a perfect storm, and here it is, so. But I really do appreciate all the hard work that went into developing this budget and the attention to detail and the thoroughness of the presentation. I continue to see improvements year over year, and I think the community appreciates that as well. Any other further questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Agenda item eight, consider the annual school district meeting warning, which is article three? Is that correct?
The meeting warning, I believe is the whole thing.
Oh, it's the whole thing, okay.
Way too much.
Do you want me to read this one, Elizabeth?
Well, is.
It's the whole warning, it's the whole language warning.
Do you have the updated one with numbers in it?
I don't, but the numbers are in here, right?
We have a copy for you.
Do you have an updated one?
Again, part of this was we, we made assumptions based on whether or not you'd been changing that, but.
So, we have done, we have done article two.
You have, but you still need to read the annual warning meeting, right? Which is part of the, you need to read the top portion of the.
Okay, so this is the entire annual warning.
Okay, I've got it. The line handed me an updated copy, okay. Would you like water? Yeah, I didn't grab any water before the meeting because I walked in right at six. So, warning, City of South Burlington School District, 2020 Annual Meeting. The legal voters of the City of South Burlington School District are hereby notified and warned to meet at their respective polling places at the Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School on Dorset Street, the Orchard School on Baldwin Avenue, and the Chamberlain School on White Street on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at seven o'clock in the morning, at which time the polls will open until seven o'clock in the evening, at which time the polls will close, to vote by Australian ballot on the following articles. Article one, election of officers. To elect two directors to the South Burlington School District Board of School Directors, one director for a three-year term and one director for a two-year term as required by law. Article two, authorization to issue general obligation debt for capital construction. The South Burlington School District Board of School Directors proposes to incur bonded indebtedness for the purpose of financing construction of a new high school and a new middle school on properties located at 505 and 550 Dorset Street at a total project cost of $209,588,828. It is expected that 0% of the project will be eligible for state school construction aid and therefore 100% of the project cost, $209,588,828, will be the responsibility of the South Burlington School District. So, shall the bonds of the South Burlington School District, or shall the bonds of the South Burlington School District in an amount not to exceed $209,588,828 be issued for the purpose of financing construction of a new high school and a new middle school on the properties located at 505 and 550 Dorset Street? State funds may not be available at the time this project is otherwise eligible to receive state school construction aid. The district is responsible for all costs incurred in connection with any borrowing done in anticipation of state school construction aid. Article three, budget. Shall the voters of the City of South Burlington School District approve the school board to expend $55,865,686, which is the amount the school board has determined to. to expend $55,865,686, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $17,447.92 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 9.59% more than spending for the current year. Polling places are the Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School at 500 Dorset Street, the Orchard School at 2 Baldwin Avenue, and the Chamberlain School at 262 White Street. Voters are to go to the polling place in their respective district. The legal voters of the City of South Burlington School District are further warned and notified that a public information meeting will be held to discuss articles one, two, and three on Monday, March 2, 2020, at Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School Cafeteria at 7:00 P.M. The legal voters of the City of South Burlington School District are further notified that voter qualification, registration, and absentee voting relative to said annual meeting shall be as provided in chapters 43, 51, and 55 of Title 17, Vermont Statutes Annotated, dated at South Burlington, Vermont, this 15th day of January, 2020.
I make a motion that we adopt this ballot language as read by Bridget.
Second that.
Discussion? I would just add this caveat that we're, we'll get legal counsel on the interest question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. All right, agenda item nine, the FY 2021 Budget Communication Plan. Do we have an outline of?
No, I don't, I do not have that outlined at present, but we'll, we'll get that. I was hoping that we would have that all outlined, it's being, continuing to be worked on. This is again, in concert with Juniper, so that will be, we'll be rolling it, and I'll get that to you, and we'll be able to review it also at the 20-second meeting as well.
Any, any additional comments or direction for David? All right, I will take a motion to go into executive session to discuss labor negotiations with teachers, support staff, and administrators, and legal, and legal services interviews, where premature and general public knowledge would place the board at substantial disadvantage.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn out of regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move into the superintendent's office.